Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
James, could we have a roll call, please?
Lenny Nelson.
Up here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Joshua Brainard.
Here.
Marcy Baker.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Okay, any agenda changes or revisions?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. We have the minutes from our regular meeting of November 19th. I suspect you've all had an opportunity to review them. Thank you, James, for summarizing a very long and detailed meeting really well, so thanks for doing that. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes of the last planning meeting.
I'll second.
Oh, gosh, second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are taken care of. Any final orders, resolutions, or written communications?
We do not have any at this time.
Okay, hi, everyone, nice to see you. We are at the stage on the conditional use permit 2019-03, Chance Emergency Shelter Conditional Use Permit. As you may recall, if you were here last time, we had a public hearing. We closed the public hearing at the end of that meeting, but we left the record open for additional input from folks. We did receive some additional information. All of the commissioners have had an opportunity to review that. And now we are at the point where we are going to deliberate. So we are not taking public comment anymore at this meeting on this topic. This is the time where the commissioners have an opportunity to deliberate and come to a decision in a vote. So I'm going to assume that all of my commissioners have reviewed everything. Marcy, were you able to review the meeting?
Yeah, I watched the video online twice, actually.
Twice?
Yeah, I showed up late, so I saw the testimony and opposition, and later, once it was online, I watched the whole thing, and then to review the minutes, I watched the whole thing again, so.
Okay, okay, great. So there's no issue with Marcy taking part in the deliberations, correct?
No.
Okay.
That's what she was supposed to do.
She did what she was supposed to do, good job.
You might want to ask if there's any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed.
Yeah, that was my next point. Has there been any ex parte communications with any of the commissioners on this topic? Have you run into anyone in the store? Talked to anybody on the phone, Facebook? Okay, not hearing any.
So you can ask staff for assistance, that's planning staff and legal staff. You cannot ask the applicant or any members of the audience anything, so this is just for you to discuss. Sometimes you want more help from me and staff, sometimes you don't want our help at all, so we're here to help you if you need it. I will say that we did, Chance did provide final written argument by the deadline. However, Chance did include facts that were not in the record, and so we redacted them. And we provided you with the redacted version, where we took out any, and this was both Anne Marie and I looked at it, and any facts that were not in the record were removed from the document that's on your table. So we didn't have an ex party problem with additional facts coming in, otherwise, we'd have to continue the hearing, and so we were able to head that off.
Okay.
So if you have questions, go ahead and ask, and I'll step you through it if you want.
Any other legal advice you want to provide?
Well, it's a conditional use application. Probably the most, well, to summarize, I think most of the testimony and evidence did not concern the actual application. A lot of the information, when we get to a final written order, and Anne Marie and I have been working on drafts of approval and denial of this, one thing that's for sure is that there was a lot of testimony that was irrelevant because it concerned the existing operation, which is there as a permitted use, and is not the subject of this hearing. So that's important. Another thing that was pretty obvious was there was a lot of prejudicial discriminatory statements in the opposition, and I'd recommend that the planning commission expressly reject that kind of testimony as inappropriate and not applicable to this proceeding. We have a job to do, and that's to apply the facts to the law, and attacking the patrons or staff and talking about conditions they may or may not have, addicted to drugs or alcoholism or things like that, is inappropriate, contrary to law, and I think, in the written findings, I'm going to recommend you expressly reject that as a basis for approval or denial. It's just not appropriate to consider those things. So those two major factors I would want you to emphasize is that there was a lot that was said that does not relate to a warming shelter that, you know, as proposed, opens at six and closes at eight, and is not operating with, during the same time as the recovery operation that is there during the day. And it's just inappropriate to disparage the patrons and otherwise do, it's just contrary to law. So those are two things I want you to keep in mind. The others are, the criterion allow for issues to be fixed essentially with the imposition of conditions of approval. And so when we're talking about the operation of the warming shelter and identified issues, you have evidence in the record from many, you know, neighbors and community members and from the police department about these conditions should be imposed in order to mitigate adverse impacts. So I think those are important to consider, especially as regards that fourth criterion which addresses impacts. I think also probably important is the second criterion about the adequacy of the site for the proposed use. So the proposed use is a warming shelter, use of nine hundred some odd square feet, but there's a lot more going on, especially when you impose conditions, you start, one of examples is staff says there should be an outdoor gathering area for people to gather before it's opened, and so they aren't loitering other places. Well, that then changes the amount of square footage proposed for the use, because the use now has an outdoor gathering area. So I think you need to acknowledge that the conditions of approval increase the amount of space devoted to the proposed use, even though it's not increasing the square footage inside. And the applicant's testimony in answering a lot of the opposition was, well, we have professional staff, and those professional staff can be there to do this or do that. Well, in their application, they state that there won't be overlap between professional staff operating during the day use and the volunteers operating for the shelter use. And if staff is coming back, then staff needs a parking space. So that's certainly applicable to the criterion about the adequacy of the use, and you have to acknowledge that they are going to have to increase the square footage, or through a condition of approval, you're saying you must identify those areas where the professional staff, should they come back, are going to be, and make that part of the conditional use as well.
Okay.
And I can step through the criterion with you, or just let you go at it and ask me questions if you want to.
Okay, Steve?
I have a question. If we approve the application tonight with conditions, for example, building a fence or putting in a camera system, do the conditions have to be met before the facility can operate? Or can the facility begin operations with the understanding that the conditions will be achieved within a certain period of time, like thirty days or six weeks?
If you phrase the condition accordingly, yes.
I think the answer is both. I think if you have a condition that says, within ninety days, submit a report on whether or not you have adequate parking, that's a condition that obviously would be effective after the, if the facility operates. But if you say, you must obtain a life safety inspection for compliance with, you know, Technical Advisory Memo fourteen dash twelve of the Oregon Fire Code, and get a sign-off from the Building Department and the Fire Department before you operate, then they don't operate until that's completed. So I think it's all about how you word it, and I think staff's been pretty careful. I know that I talked to Anne Marie about adding a condition about that Technical Advisory Memo, and I read it during the hearing what that entailed. So I think you can have both.
Okay, Marie?
That goes right to the question I had, do we know if the Fire Department has, that they have inspected the building and if they've passed?
That would be part of the Technical Advisory Memo. I've spoke with the Fire Marshal and the Building Inspector a couple of weeks prior to the public hearing, and that would be part of their inspection they do for warming shelters and emergency shelters. There's no charge, and they, like I said, they do an inspection for fire and life safety against the requirements of the Technical Advisory Memo, and if it passes, then they are free to operate, and if it doesn't, then they need to address whatever items need to be addressed.
If you're asking whether or not it's been done, we can't tell you, because you're not supposed to ask us for additional facts. So if it's not in the-
You mentioned that in the meeting before.
Yes, if it's not in the record now, it's not coming in. So we're not going to tell you anything new, but it's proposed not as, it's proposed as a condition of approval, which means it will occur after approval.
Chairman?
If you choose to approve.
Okay.
It will occur?
Madam Chairman.
If you choose to approve this, it will occur after.
I believe I noted in my original staff report, given verbally, that it had not occurred, and it would need to occur. So that is in the record.
That's why I was asking the follow-up.
Lenny?
It is my belief that the application that was made to us originally is not complete. That's, this whole hearing has been nothing but them trying to catch up with the things that the neighborhood is saying, or technical ideas that they didn't think of, or interface with police or other community services that they haven't actually talked to. So I'm of the belief that I think we ought to deny this and ask them to come back with a completed application.
Okay, well, I want to get everybody's opinion before we do any sorts of motions, if that's agreeable with everyone. Okay, so do you have other?
Well, the other thing-
As long as you have the floor.
As long as I have, oh, hoodie. The other thing that I believe is that we do need a warming shelter. It does get cold out there. I know there are people who need a place to stay when it's cold out there. When I used to own a business, they used to sleep behind my building. I also believe that most people who go to a warming shelter are people who are down on their luck, not people that you wouldn't want to have in your neighborhood. So I am not opposed to this idea, but I just don't think that we understand yet what it is that the applicant is actually proposing to do.
Okay. Let's just come down the row, how's that?
Okay.
So, Marcy, thoughts?
Well, from what I saw, it seemed that the applicant has very thoroughly explained what they're intending to do. It's, they have more funding than the previous warming shelter that operated in Taft because they've partnered with Chance. I think some of the things that might have seemed incomplete, like what was in the statement from the police department about the relationship, is because the warming shelter is not currently operating. So, yes, last year, they had that relationship, they don't have the fax number yet. I see that as a very small negligible issue. I don't think the police department was saying they're not willing to work with Chance doing the same thing that they did for the warming shelter before, so I don't see that being an issue. I was able to find their fax number in about ten seconds by Googling them, so. I think what made sense, what would make sense to me is to go through the criteria and see if we feel that the criteria is met. Obviously, criteria four had the most discussion about it with the neighborhood, but.
Do you have specific issues regarding other criteria?
I have some stuff, so. I think maybe it's easier to start with some of the things that are entirely, I think, unrelated, which would be our public bathroom crisis. There was a lot of discussion even from the police making a comment about that twenty-four hour bathroom should be provided. I happen to run a business in town that's open until three AM, not very many businesses are, and I have people come in and use my bathroom all the time, but I'm also not expected to provide a bathroom for anyone who uses the services I offer after I close. So to me, that seemed unrelated to me, even though it seemed, a lot of the discussions seemed to feel that was relevant. But anything about that is already related to Chance's daytime operations, which is not, not what we're looking at. So I didn't think the bathroom thing was relevant. I think that's going to benefit the community for them to be open. You know, if you're really asking about number four, how is it going to affect the surrounding neighborhood? There's going to be up to twenty-eight less people on the street, they're going to be somewhere safe, they're going to have shelter, there is security there, you know, we can go into detail on the conditions, but I think that, you know, having the security system, I think maybe even keeping a log, you know, bars keep logs of any incidents of anything that happens, which makes it really easy to reference or go back and look at if there's an issue later on. You know, I definitely think that this is something that our community absolutely needs. And as far as I can tell, I agree with the city staff that the criteria can be met with reasonable conditions. So I did have some ideas on conditions to work well with the neighborhood, but.
Let's get to those after, okay, we'll come back, circle back around for suggested conditions. Miles?
I think that the problem stems back to when the government stopped funding such things as Fairview Home and such, and the community has gotten more complex with more problems, and I think the people who are associated with Chance are a great asset to the community. I do have two reservations, though. I want the fence built around the back area of the building so that smoking and, smoking and access can be gained from the building, and there is a side door that can be accessed in a locked area so that people can go out at night and not be out of the camera view. And I'm wondering where the fence that you recommended goes, because there's an easy place to place that smoking area and cut off the view from the neighbor's property, which is in a zone, a residential zone with those apartments, and I think those neighbors deserve to be protected, even if the people are not particularly harmless. They are, they do create a use which is not in the zone. So I'm wondering where the fence is going to go that protects that area, and if the tenant has agreed to put that in before the shelter is opened officially.
I think we would need to make the fencing a part of the conditional use, so the conditions-
Have they agreed to that, though?
We don't know, and we can't know.
I remember some testimony, there was someone who testified-
Someone did say they would build it.
They had offered and would help make that happen, and I believe that Chance-
I heard that too, but I was wondering if Chance's, Mr. Blackford, has agreed to that, or?
Well, if it's a condition, then.
We could make it a condition, and then he would have to agree to it, whether he has already or not, his move, he would have to agree to it in order to get the permit.
And Commissioner, it was in the staff report, and the applicant received the staff report.
I saw that, but I didn't see, I couldn't tell where the fence was supposed to go.
I believe it was along the north and the east lines of the property.
It's specifically in condition one, that it's a six-foot tall solid wood fence along the north property line, a Vesseller map lists the lot, and the north and east property lines of, and list the lot, and provides a buffer between the apartment building to the north and the golf course to the east. So it is specifically identified in the report as to where the fence would go. And the staff report had said prior to certificate of occupancy, but it's just prior to occupancy, because I don't think we're going to be issuing certificates of occupancy. So we can go through the language of the conditions if you're heading toward approval, and I have several that, you know, the plant, the police department had recommended in addition, they had called them suggestions, this is on packet page twenty-two, there were suggestions the police had put forward. You may or may not agree with all of them, but I think you should discuss them.
Yeah, okay. Is that it? All right, Steve?
Yeah, I was actually thinking, the warming shelter may not be an appropriate name. I would think a more appropriate name for the warming shelter is severe weather center, shelter. And since our last meeting, we have had severe weather here in Lincoln City, we've had very cold weather that was below forty degrees, we've had wet and windy storms. I think the application meets all of the criteria, and that it will have minimal impact on the neighborhood. On the average, it's likely to be open only twelve nights a year, based on the previous operation of the warming shelters. That's a fraction of the entire year. And all of the clients, at night, they're not going to be outside, they're going to be inside the warming shelter. And if the city has a contribution to make to support this effort, I think it should be an increased patrols perhaps, if the city wants to do that and provide the funding for that. But you mentioned the police suggestions just now, and there was one of them, that I don't think that the warming shelter should be expected to provide transportation for someone they turn away to another shelter, any more than a restaurant who declines to serve a client is required to provide transportation for that person to another restaurant. It's not-
They don't do that?
They don't do that. And so it's, that's a police responsibility, it's not the warming shelter's responsibility. So I think we should, I would vote to approve this application, perhaps with some conditions, but I would say the conditions do not need to be met before the warming shelter opens, they can be met afterwards, or while it's operating. That's where I stand on this.
Okay, Marie?
First of all, I want to say that I believe we do need a warming shelter, and I believe also that this is in the wrong location at this time. Looking at the documentation provided by Chance, as the rebuttal, ninety-nine percent of this is rebuttal that is associated with Chance, not the warming shelter. So much of the, what has been addressed has to do with Chance. Listening to testimony on the warming shelter itself, there are lots and lots of concerns, yes, with the neighborhood. For me, it's a safety issue right now in that location. It is a small business park, but it is surrounded by a tremendous amount of individual residences and apartments and a lot of people. And then the other part that concerns me is, we have a police force here, and I recognize in the documentation, they have now taken, they say they have addressed this with the police department, but up until now, up until this point, there was no communication with the police to iron out things, but it was, the testimony was towards, we've got this partnership with the police, and it had not occurred. So I, my biggest concern has to deal with the safety, which is number four of the concerns in the neighborhood, since it is primarily a residential area.
Safety for whom?
Safety for not only the people there, but the people that are, that surround it. One of the things, one of the questions I had asked when Chance was here, had to deal with, do they have an intake process? Because the intake process allows people to identify who is coming into your shelter, even if it's overnight, it's a way of knowing who is really there. And there is not, from everything that they said that night, there is not a process of identifying who is coming through the door. So if I, as a person, am coming in looking for shelter, whether or not I have fake ID or regular ID, or am known or not known, whoever it is comes in. At this point, there's nothing that stipulates they cannot come in. The concern of knowing who is in that shelter is not addressed under the warming shelter. And I understand, under the Chance documentation, they have a lot of processes that are not included in the processes that they deal with the overnight guests. So you don't know who's in your neighborhood, and I'm concerned about that. They also, based upon the report that we received from Chief Palmer, they do, they cannot get some of that information from, by calling the police or looking at a roster that is sent back or faxed in. There's a lot of information they cannot get that specifies whether this person is really a problem and they really don't want it. They say, we do not allow rapists, we do not allow sex offenders, we do not allow this, but they don't know who they are necessarily dealing with.
But, you know, it's also true for those of us who live near VRDs or neighbors, we don't know who are in those houses running.
That's true.
So, I think we may, you may be thinking you're requiring too much of the warming shelter, I don't think-
I just feel that as far as knowing, they're going to know who's in town, for the most part, but there may be people in town that are looking to avoid law, et cetera, and giving fake IDs coming in because it's a nice place to get to. I'm just concerned, my concern and my, my focus in that respect is, is the safety aspect of the neighbors.
So, just so I'm clear, so you're concerned that these people who may be, for lack of a better word, shifty, are going to be contained overnight within this facility-
It might be.
-as opposed to being loose on the streets?
They might, I recognize loose on the streets, but at the same time, they're coming to that neighborhood, they're coming into that neighborhood, and even if they are turned away, where are they going to go? We have a situation, I mean, it's inviting people. So my concern is, it's, I agree that a warming shelter is definitely needed, it's not a question of whether one is needed or not, it's the location, being with apartments and kids and-
It's a general commercial zone, and the city is seven and a half miles long from one end to the other, and it's a strip city, which businesses on either side of 101, and that's just a natural extension past that area. There is a neighborhood there, but-
There's apartments and kids.
If you're going to do certain things that are in the staff report that they generated for us-
Mm-hmm.
If you're going to do certain things that are in the staff report that they generated for us, where would you suggest the Warming Shelter or cold weather shelter be? There's no place, no one wants it.
Well, and that's not the-
Let's not go there.
Placing it is not the issue for us to decide tonight. We have a conditional use permit application in front of us.
At this location.
At this location.
And it's not a criterion, it's not a criterion to look at other locations.
Right.
So let's just focus on this.
And this location is an appropriate general commercial zone.
Well, we, we have some disagreement about whether or not this is the appropriate location. So we'll just move on from there. You're not all going to agree on everything, so.
Josh, thoughts?
Well, last, many of my fellow commissioners have covered a lot of these conversations already. I'll say that I definitely agree with the fact that we should have a Warming Shelter. These are necessary services we should provide. Also, we cannot ignore the residential area around it. It obviously has a great representation, many opinions, and rooted in our neighborhood as well as our residents and citizens. So I really try to stay focused on number four, the adverse use criteria, adverse effects criteria. And I think many of the people here during the last commission meeting were here to express just a conflict with that. Additionally, some concerns I have with the organization is communication. Initially, when this process started, the letter from Schnookwin's Casino, the assumption that you could send people there and use their restrooms to a laundromat, to anywhere without that communication. And then even this last communication with the police department. I ran organizations, I currently run a governmental organization. Communication is key with all other organizations especially. Especially ones that are going to be directly involved with your organization. So I have a little difficulty understanding why none of that took place and why you're following the ball on that if you're already running these services in other cities and areas. That's about all I have.
Can I-
You reject? Sure.
No, I have a couple things I need, I want you to make a finding on. So Condition 1, Criteria 1, which is, is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Most people gloss over that. I would prefer, I would have preferred that the applicants that have looked at the Comprehensive Plan, and I can't find any specific provision that deals with Warming Shelter use or this proposed use. I would have preferred that staff had made that finding. But you're the decision maker. So because nobody else did, I'm going to ask that if, when you make this decision, that as to Criteria 1, you make a finding that there is no specific criterion in the Comprehensive Plan that has to do with this proposed use, and therefore this criterion isn't applicable to this conditional use. So that's just to cover the bases. I know Criteria 1 is not exciting, okay? But Criteria-
And it doesn't, so what you're saying is Criteria 1 isn't applicable, it doesn't-
It's either met or it's not applicable because there's nothing specific. But I think you should find that, otherwise it's a question of, well-
Right.
Why didn't you say it, there isn't or not? And let's just step through to Criteria 2.
What page of the packet is the criteria listed on, Emily?
It was on the, it was, oh.
Yeah, well, this criterion just says the proposal is in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. That's the, that's in-
Right.
The conditional use criterion, it's, it's under C1, basically, the findings of fact. So your first finding is, hey, there's no specific provision in the plan that applies. Therefore, it's either met or it's not applicable. The second criterion is the site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use of all yards, spaces, walls and fences, parking, loading, landscaping and other features required by this title. Now, as to this criterion, I found a little bit of a conflict in that the applicant proposed to have a separation of the existing use from the proposed use, that the recovery operations that Chance runs during the day would close at 5:00, and then this shelter run by volunteers would open at 6:00. And there'd be this number of volunteers, and there's adequate parking, which goes to this criteria, because they'd have this number of volunteers. But then when they were answering objections by the neighbors, well, what if someone has a problem? And they need to talk to someone, they said, well, our professional staff could, well, you know what? Your professional staff all went home at 5:00 o'clock. So there's a conflict there about the adequacy of the, of the size of the facility for the proposed use. If you call back counselors or whatever, where are they going to be? How much additional space are you going to need? Also, if you're going to impose conditions, like there has to be an outdoor gathering area or an outdoor smoking area, then that increases the size of the space devoted to this use. I think if you're going to approve this as a condition of approval, they should be required to address, basically, this assertion by saying, which, telling you what additional area will be occupied by professional staff, including parking. And the conditions of approval are going to basically have to limit the number of staff that are there or reduce the number of volunteers that are there when professional staff is there. Because if you're making a finding that you've got enough room for this, you can't, you know, have the professional staff park on top of the volunteers. It's just that simple. So I think as a condition of approval, you should require them to identify that and agree to make sure they address that.
Mr. Appicello?
Yeah.
In the staff report, I noted the building is existing. No new construction or additions to the building are proposed. There are no requirements for spaces, walls or fences in the GC zone. The site has an existing parking lot that met the requirements, parking requirements at the time the site was developed. No changes to the parking lot are proposed. The site plan that was submitted shows 18 parking spaces, which is enough to accommodate the eight to 12 overnight volunteers.
And I acknowledge that. But the code also says, in addition to addressing the requirements of Title 17 for the proposed use, you also are, planning commission is allowed to impose conditions to mitigate any adverse impact. So what are we trying to mitigate? We're trying to mitigate people parking other places. You know, professional staff has to show up because of some issue. Now where are they going to park? Well, that's, that's the issue. So that's my suggestion, take it or leave it. If there is a need, you might have to require that they address additional parking through a shared parking agreement. There's other areas where people could park around, in the area. So if the parking proves to be inadequate, they need X number of professional staff there in addition to their volunteers, then you should have a report that they need additional parking and have them provide some kind of a shared parking agreement. It's my suggestion as to how I would mitigate that. And that's, that's as to Criterion 2. Criterion 3 has to deal with the adequate-
Streets and highways.
The adequacy of streets and highways for vehicular traffic. And pretty much staff said the road has sufficient capacity, and this does not concern pedestrian traffic. So testimony about, you know, the safety of the right of way, people walking, isn't applicable to this. So I think staff concluded it was met. Number 4 got a lot of play at the hearing and had to do with the adverse impact on the neighborhood. And staff proposed conditions of approval, which I thought were all appropriate. And the, what you have to consider is whether or not you want to step through them right now. I can just read them, and you can think about whether or not you concur or don't. The first one was prior to occupancy, install a six-foot-tall wood fence along the north property line and the north and east property line. And I'm not going to read all the tax lot map numbers. The second one was prior to occupancy, create an outdoor gathering area adjacent to the building. And that will have surveillance and trash receptacles, smoking station. And the gathering area basically is going to be illuminated and can't be within 20 feet of the west property line. The third condition was relocate the existing picnic table to the site of the gathering area. The fourth one was install video surveillance cameras. At least one camera on every exterior wall. The fifth one, employ a security guard who's present in the site 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. And the sixth one was addition of trash receptacle and recyclables, receptacle in the gathering area. Additional trash receptacle in the front west side of the building. And then you had submitted from the police department, a couple other suggestions. Well, first, I suggest that you specifically require that the Oregon Fire Code Technical Advisory Memo Number 1412, you know, require an inspection before occupancy. And then from the police department, they requested that the restroom facilities remain open between 5:00 and 6:00 on nights when the shelter will be open. Or porta-potties should be available. They said at all times, I think at least between 5:00 and 6:00. They also suggested the facility, when they turn clients away, and this was mentioned, they provide transportation to other appropriate facilities rather than just turn them into neighborhoods. You may or may not agree on that. They suggested, and I think this was my, discussing it with them, that they provide daily briefings or education about the importance of obeying laws and being good neighbors. Basically, give out some information about, you know, urination and defecation in, in public is a crime in Lincoln City. So be advised. It's not a good idea to do that. If you've got to walk to the casino, walk to the casino, but don't, you know. And then Chance should conduct regular community outreach meetings with neighborhoods. That's also a suggestion. So those were the conditions of approval as I see them and with the additional suggestions that I made.
Okay. So I'd like to hear what the chair has to say. She's the only one who hasn't spoken. Okay. You know, zoning establishes hard lines on a map. And it defines the activities that take place within those lines. And in reality, there are transitions between zones. And there are things that are probably more or less appropriate for those transitional areas. And usually, things that are located in those transitional areas are what bring out the public to talk about their opinions on things. So this is really where we earn our pay. I don't think it's, um- You're getting paid. No, that's right. We're not paid. So, you know, Mr. Appicello has outlined the, the portions of the code that we have to consider. And a lot of them are pretty straightforward, black and white, measurable, you know, distances from lot lines, setbacks and such. But then the subjective issues, such as adverse impacts to a neighborhood, those are a little bit trickier. And so we're tasked with balancing the adverse impacts to folks within the community against the positive contributions to some of the less fortunate in our community that a facility like this provides. We're not going to talk about the location because that's not what we were asked to do. So we all, I'm sure, have opinions on where we think it should be. But that's not what we've been asked to do. We've listened to the community members who took time to attend the meeting last time and submit written or spoken comments on this issue. We've listened to the proponents of the action. I don't doubt the sincerity of anybody that spoke. These are strongly held positions. This is a problem. It's not just a problem in Lincoln City. It's a problem in Oregon. It's a problem in the United States. It's not going to go away. And it's not something that can be just booted around from neighborhood to neighborhood. I appreciate the efforts of Chance in trying to address this issue. It is an issue that the city needs to deal with. And I also recognize that the approach to solving this needs to be extremely well-thought-out, well-planned. And I do agree with some of my fellow commissioners that it could have been better. Nobody's perfect, but it could have been better. A responsible mitigation plan that recognizes the true impact of the activity and tries to address some of the issues associated with that is important. The coordination with law enforcement, there was some disconnect there between what we heard versus what we heard from the police department in terms of that coordination. And I think a lot of the issues that the residents of the neighborhood brought up have to do with law enforcement issues. So that's a, that's a critical need. So, you know, I ask myself what can go wrong? What, what are we doing to assist the less fortunate in our neighborhood? And what are the real adverse impacts in the neighborhood? And just on a personal note, I will suggest that abdicating a responsibility onto law enforcement is a bit of a trigger in this town for a lot of folks who live near VRDs. Because the expectation is that you will provide unpaid monitoring services for behavior that's going on in the neighborhood as a consequence of a VRD next door, and you're going to be calling the police on a regular basis. It's an enforcement issue, and I just put that out there as not being terribly fair to folks. On the other hand, if there is no place for people to go after dark, there is the potential for folks to be wandering aimlessly in the streets or seeking shelter in your backyard or in your tool shed or your whatever that you may have. So another, another issue. Bad behavior results in a ban from your facilities. I want you to kind of think about what that means in terms of where those folks go, if they are banned from your facility, and have a plan in place for what you will do if they come back angry. I think that the, you know, the question, you know, boils down to, does this activity place our most vulnerable residents at risk? A lot of the public talked about kids being at risk in this situation. But I think you need to consider that these folks are also extremely vulnerable. And a lack of a facility puts them at risk as well. We already talked about the police indicating your statements regarding coordination where I think the quote from the police statement was "at least misleading." So I, I would expect you to get that straightened out with them. Again, courtesy calls to the police, increased police presence in the neighborhood. If the police are there, they're not in other parts of the city. So that's another potential consequence. And, you know, the, the police records indicate an increase in calls in the neighborhood since Chance has been operating there. So the question, of course, is, does the opening of a Warming Facility increase or decrease those calls? I don't know. I don't, I don't think we know. So it is a balancing act. And with all that said, I am extremely sensitive to the fact we have a critical need to take care of each other. We have a critical need in this city to take care of the less fortunate. And it has been cold, as my fellow commissioners pointed out. We have gone through a week here of extremely cold temperatures. And I do think it is a responsibility, to the best of our ability, to take care of, of those less fortunate. So that said, I have some suggestions for conditions for approval for this. And I do agree that Criteria 1 is not applicable. With, I'll go through them with regard to the criteria. The question of adequacy of fencing, et cetera, which is, I think, Criteria 2. I think the building, the exterior grounds of the property needs to be fenced. It needs to include a gathering area with a picnic table, a weather shelter, trash and recyclable receptacles, a smoking area, even though I know you're, you're really adamant about smoking cessation, that's an idealized view of, of working with folks who are trying to kick this. So they do need a spot. Downward-facing exterior lighting. And so that would increase the square footage of the proposed operation. The second condition is to install a video surveillance system to include exterior and the interior of the building with live feeds and a video backup. I believe the police- I believe the police also requested that you keep tapes for thirty days. I think that's a good idea to maintain those tapes. Employ security guards to be present and await continuously on the site when the shelter is open, and at least one hour before the shelter opens in the evening through two hours after the shelter closes in the morning. I don't remember what the exact hours are, but one hour before, two hours after. Provide training for all your volunteers with overlap of professional paid staff during the operation of the facility. And that is, again, I think, criteria two. As far as whether there would be additional parking, I think that's something that we can see if it works, and if you need to provide more, we can revisit it. I initially felt that you should provide restroom facilities that are accessible twenty-four I could be maybe convinced that that should only cover the time period between when Chance closes and when the warming shelter opens, but it sort of feels like if you're going to have them open, you should have them open. I did not see anywhere on the plan shower facilities, so I'm going to say that that's a condition, but if it's already been met within the plans, it's already been met, but you need to provide shower facilities for your clients. I want you to provide additional mitigation plan to address the cleanup of illegal camping activity by individuals that may be turned away from the shelter or choose of their own volition once they come and see what might be required of them to gain entrance that they'd rather not. You brought them up into the area, and I want you to clean up after them if they, particularly because of the adjacency of open space, the golf course and things, that's a fairly nice spot. And I can imagine if people have traveled all the way to the north end of town to spend the night, and they are turned away for whatever reason, they're not going back to Cutler City. They're going to want to stay in the neighborhood, so I think you should be aware of that. I'd like you to implement a program to instruct your clients daily regarding the respectful and lawful neighborhood behavior. Include the issue of property trespass and dumpster diving, dog cleanup, you know, and other behaviors, as Mr. Appicello outlined, that are actually illegal. And then meet the conditions of the Oregon Fire Code Technical Memo fourteen dash twelve prior to opening. That's my list.
Mr. Chair.
All right.
Can I make a couple comments on the end of the chair?
Sure. Marcy first, and then me.
Okay. Okay. So, one thing I did make a note about is the smoking station. The applicant testified that it is against their lease, essentially. The property owner does not allow it, and Health and Human Services follows that policy. I know I don't smoke in the parking lot. When I go to the DMV, I wait till I drive out of their parking lot. That's a pretty normal thing, and I kind of thought, what business can I think of that is required to provide a smoking area? And I think, you know, more and more, we're going, our society is going in the direction of banning smoking on all hospital campuses, school campuses, college campuses. You can't smoke anymore. And so, to require a nonprofit who gets their funding, who could potentially lose their lease or their funding, you know, if we require that of them, you know, that's outside of our control if that happens. And personally, I just, I don't feel that it's appropriate as, you know, a city body to require a nonprofit that's trying to help people quit smoking and has state funding, you know, from our state to do this, that has these requirements to go against that. I understand people don't want people smoking in the local neighborhood. But another note I did make in response to what the police suggested about counseling, about being good neighbors, I thought about that a little bit, and there could be like a good neighbor program that would really help the whole community. You mentioned homeless camp cleanup. That could be one thing that people that are using the services could participate in. There'd be some people that might have some free time that might be willing to help some people in the local neighborhood with odd jobs and whatnot. Some more people introducing themselves and smiling at each other and getting to know each other might add a little more humanity to the conversation.
Those are all true. I'm not sure we want to make them a condition of the permit.
Well, no, but to say we would like to see some sort of good neighbor program within, say, two weeks and allow them to present something.
I think one of the, wasn't one of the conditions that, Anne Marie, did you not have a condition of coordination, neighborhood coordination meetings or participation?
I did not have that.
You did not?
Mm-mm.
You know, it's kind of a vague thing at this point to really put on there, but I think that they're at least, you know, looking forward down the road at that, that honestly, I think we can all agree that none of us want to see an increase in property crime or drug use or public indecency, or our fellow men, women, and children sleeping outside subject to the elements. I'm personally very passionate about this. I see people every single day, especially this time of year, coming into my business just to warm up their feet. And I feed them, and I let them use my bathroom because they're human beings, and they have nowhere to go, and we have absolutely zero public bathrooms. If you want to go walk a mile and walk your dog at night in this town, I don't know where you're going to go because you're going to have to go into a business and spend money to be able to use a bathroom unless you're walking by my bar because I'll let you use my bathroom if you're twenty-one. This kind of stuff breaks my heart, and I've lived in this town a very long time. Homeless camps are not a new thing. You know, us having a transient population in this town is not a new thing. It's not just in Lincoln City. It's not just in this neighborhood. It is in every neighborhood. I grew up in the neighborhood right behind the mall up the hill, and when I was a kid, there were hardly any houses there. I can relate to some stories I heard from people about how their neighborhood used to be. Where I really used to grow up was in Nelscott, and I used to pick blackberries where Olivia Beach is now. So, I know. I know what it's like to see a town change. And the fact of the matter is that these issues are not caused by Chance. They were not caused by the warming shelter that was in Taft. They're not caused by Health and Human Services that has a needle-syringe exchange program. Those programs are necessary and incredibly good for our community. Those ladies were sitting here talking to our city council, talking about how much good their needle exchange program has done our community. So, if a sign bothers someone, they need to educate themselves about what's really going on. Those programs get people in front of someone that can offer them help, and that is the only way. As a community, we cannot stigmatize these social services and nonprofits that are trying to help people in our community. We have to support them. You have to understand how easy it is to stigmatize these people and to think that people are just criminals, but they're not. I have had so many people that I went to school with here at Taft High School that I watched struggle with drugs on the streets. And the only way those people have found help is through programs like what Chance offers. I have not seen a city body or state government provide that for people and for our community, and so I am very, very passionate about this. I think we have to really keep in mind that we can't stigmatize people. And, you know, I don't screen for sex offenders when I'm serving someone a beer. You know, you never know who's sitting at the next table at a restaurant. You know, we have to, we can act. I personally believe we have two places that we can act from, and it's love and it's fear. And we have to ask ourselves where we're going to act from. Are we going to be afraid, or are we going to believe that people are people and they need our help? So, that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Marcy. Other thoughts? Lenny?
Yeah, this brings up a question, what she's, some of what she said brought up a question. Who will note that the Chance operation has met all the requirements before they open? Whose responsibility is that? Is it yours?
Yes, that would be the planning department staff.
Okay. And who is responsible if they start to fail to meet those requirements?
Same, planning department staff. There's provision in Title Seventeen for revocation of a conditional use permit if the conditions of approval are not met.
And you actually, and the planning department will actually take that responsibility, will take that authority?
It's part of our responsibility and authority, yes. It's part of our job.
I've had problems with that before, but okay. Okay, that's why I wanted to know. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, I liked some of your conditions. There's one I have concerns about because the shower one?
Yeah.
I would not include that because I don't know whether the current facility has showers available or not. If they don't, I think that would be a very expensive renovation that they would have to make.
I thought in the testimony, they talked about being, that the warming shelter would provide...
Showers.
A place to shower, a hot meal.
Okay, then it's there.
And a place to sleep.
So, if it's there, we don't need to include it as a condition.
Well, that's why I put it here because I didn't see on the plan an identification of the shower. I saw two, what I assume were bathrooms on the first floor. I assumed was another one or two bathrooms on the second floor, but I didn't see the shower, so that's why I put it in here because they said they provide it.
Is that a question we can clarify, Anne Marie?
Unfortunately, no.
I don't remember anything in the written materials about shower. I know that they listed hot meal, breakfast, place to sleep, change of clothes, but I don't remember shower facilities.
To the best of my recollection, the written materials nor any of the conversations I had with Chance indicated anything about showers.
Going back to that, I would recommend then we strike showers as a condition.
Okay.
Now, in order to help you get this done, okay, I've been working on an order. So, if you get to a point where you think you're close, you can, you know, make your tentative oral decision, and then I'll hand something out, but we can do that later this evening because you have, obviously, a public hearing tonight that we need to get to.
So, are you suggesting that we...
Well, I think you, I think we can all count. So, if you want to go forward and make your decision and list some of the conditions and say, okay, but we'll hammer these out when we look at the final order later this evening.
Okay.
That's, I mean, certainly I've got notes on what everybody's been saying.
Okay.
And you're not all in agreement, obviously, but, and we may take more time to nail down which conditions are going to be in this order, but ultimately, they've got to be in here.
Right.
And, but I don't see that you have to spend all the time. I think you've got a fairly good idea whether or not you're going to go approval or denial, and approval with conditions and conditions to be determined. To include, and I think you can kind of summarize, the ones set forth by the planning commission, some of the ones set forth by the police department, maybe with some modifications, and then maybe some of the ones that have been suggested, and then we'll come back and talk about it, so.
Okay. Seems like a squishy motion, but...
Well, I mean, ultimately, you make a tentative verbal decision, and then your decision is the final written order. So, I'll hand it out, and then we'll mark it up later.
Okay. Can I make one more comment?
Yeah. I think it's important we all remember what Anne Marie noted in the packet, which is that nothing's going to change about Chance, and so if we are going to put any conditions on, the only way to do it is through this process.
Right, it's conditions on the warming shelter, not on...
Exactly. But just in general, that if this is not, if it's denied, then everything just will stay there. There is no fence. Everything stays right.
Right. Okay. Okay, are we...
So, a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions to be worked out later this evening.
Right, I think that's what...
I think I'd suggest with the conditions set forth by staff, some of the conditions required by the police and some additional conditions to be hammered out in the final order, which we'll come back to after the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a second. All in favor? Should we do a roll call? Okay. Roll call, please, James.
Josh Brainerd.
Nay.
Marie McFarland.
Nay.
Steve Griffiths.
Yes.
Patty Crowen.
Yes.
Myles Schlesinger.
Yes.
Marcy Baker.
Yes.
Lenny Nelson.
Nay.
Okay, so the motion passed, four to three, and we'll come back later, and I'll hand out a draft order for your final written order, and we'll get all the conditions nailed down.
And do we need to have comments by the nays at this point?
Yes, you are correct. The planning commission rules require that when you vote no, you're supposed to indicate the reason why. I believe we've had not the appropriate location, not the appropriate location, but you actually, you said incomplete application.
I said incomplete application.
Okay, so let's let them say what they, okay. So, the reason you voted no...
Is because I believe this is an incomplete application, and I think it's an, I don't understand why it is that we feel that it's the job of the planning commission to make up for that problem.
Okay.
Good questions.
Okay. All right.
Just need to make a statement.
Marie?
Primarily inappropriate location and the additional work of places on our police force for safety.
Josh?
I would also concur that I don't feel it's appropriate location as well as the mitigation plan is severely lacking in content and any research before it was actually given to the planning commission.
Okay.
So, we'll return to this later this evening.
We'll return to this later. Okay. Where's my agenda? There it is. Okay. Variance two thousand nineteen dash oh-two, the building height variance, that was withdrawn.
Correct.
Okay. So, next up is the conditional use permit, two thousand nineteen dash four, transitional housing.
Tell us what page we're working towards.
Before we, we're actually, is Ron, Ron, are you doing the presentation about this? You're the applicant, right?
Yes. And, well, there's two parts of my data, and then you have one part.
Okay. Can, before we go there, I know that the next thing on the agenda is a zoning amendment for transitional housing. I'm not sure I'm comfortable considering these things in this order.
Yeah, that seemed odd to me, too.
And, you know, doesn't, remind me here, doesn't a zoning amendment...
Before you go that way, okay, there was, this application was based upon an interpretation by the prior planning director that the proposed use of transitional housing was like other listed uses in the zone. That land use decision was noticed and subject to appeal, was not appealed. So, the planning director has made the final decision that transitional housing is a conditional use, and that process is complete and not appealed.
We don't have a definition.
So, you are now presented with an application as determined by the planning director for transitional housing as proposed, based upon that prior decision. Now, in addition to that, there is an application to bring forward and place in the code a definition of transitional housing, as well as placing it into the code as, you know, permitted use here, conditional use there. I think it's proposed as a conditional use in this zone, but that's a separate application. This application is not dependent upon the subsequent application.
Okay, so let me ask this question. We're considering a change to zoning to define, this is the second one now, to define transitional housing. Our recommendation goes to city council for consideration and adoption, correct? So, if we provide a definition and the city council changes it or denies it or does anything else with it, how does that impact a decision on...
The law in effect at the time, you make a complete application under the goalpost rule in Oregon... rule in Oregon law, the law in effect at the time you make a complete application is the law that applies to you. So they made a complete application, planning director made a decision, this application for conditional use followed. So the new amendment doesn't necessarily apply to this application unless they want it to, then they can request that it be made applicable. But under the goalpost rule, the legislative effort which is coming forward about transitional housing and may not be adopted, who knows, is, is not necessary for the application that is before you. So I would not seek to combine them.
I don't understand that. If we, they asked for tran, uh, uh, use for transitional housing and that's not allowed in that zone, how exactly do you get around that one?
The planning director made a land use determination, the former planning director, not this one. The former planning director made an advertised decision that the proposed use was like other uses that are conditional in this zone and therefore that's how we're proceeding. That, that's a final decision, it's been made. This application for, the, the subsequent application for legislative amendment to the code is not required in order for this application to be processed.
So, so we could end up with transitional housing that is governed under two separate definitions? The current one and what might come down from council?
Like, like anything, when the code changes, the new applications have to comply with that. But if you come in before the code changes, then
Okay.
You can always choose to comply with a new law if it works in your favor and you usually ask to be, that you're amended, you be amended to comply, but again, the goalpost rule doesn't apply. If you, if you're in, you have a complete application, the goalpost rule will protect you from the application of new laws.
Okay, thank you. All right, clear. It's now seven thirteen PM and the public hearing for file CUP 2019 dash zero four is now open. This public hearing concerns a request for a conditional use permit to operate a transitional housing facility at thirty-four fifty-four Northeast Highway one oh one and twenty-two zero one Northeast Thirty-Fourth Street. These are assessors map zero seven dash eleven dash zero two dash CC, tax lots three hundred and five hundred in the general commercial or GC zone. The applicant is the City of Lincoln City, Ron Chandler, city manager. The property owner is Hayden Peters, the trustee for the Gary L. Peters Trust. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a commissioner to participate in this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to consider this matter? The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS one nine seven point seven six three, section five. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision.
Thank you. Applicable criteria are Lincoln City, Lincoln City Municipal Code, chapter seventeen point three two, general commercial zone, and Lincoln City Municipal Code, chapter seventeen point sixty, conditional uses.
Okay, all testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria that Anne Marie just listed or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. So before the staff presents a report, I will summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the planning commission and the city council. A summary of the public hearing procedures is on the table by the entrance to the council chambers. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements, followed by the staff report and questions of the staff. The applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those neutral and those opposed, and I promise to try to keep those lists straight this time. Testimony from public agencies, rebuttal by the applicant, requests of continuance or to leave the record open, then the close of the hearing, the close of the record, request to submit written argument, deliberations, and a decision. The city has established some time limits. The applicant will have fifteen minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time for rebuttal. After the applicant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to those questions don't count against your time limit. If you wish to speak, please print your name and your mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet on the table at the entrance, and then when you're called forward, please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating just your name. If you have any written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy of it to James here. Okay, please present the staff report.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Anne Marie Skinner with the Planning and Community Development Department. This case file, CUP 2019 dash zero four, is for a transitional housing facility. The applicant, as has been stated previously, is the City of Lincoln City. The subject property is owned by the Gary L. Peters trustee estate. The address of the property is three four five four Northeast Highway one oh one and twenty-two zero one Northeast Thirty-Fourth Street. The site consists of two tax lots and I will refer you to the aerial photo, which is also the zoning map that is on the screen. My cursor is going around the tax lot closest to Highway one oh one, that is three four five four Northeast Highway one oh one, and immediately adjacent to that to the east, larger tax lot, that is twenty-two zero one Northeast Thirty-Fourth Street. And the application is for the transitional housing facility to be on both of those tax lots. The site totals approximately thirty thousand five hundred ninety-nine square feet as indicated on the Lincoln County Assessor's records. Surrounding uses and zones, as you can see from the zoning map, again, on the screen, directly to the north, that is zone general commercial, similar to the subject site, which is also zone general commercial. Those are commercial uses to the north. Slightly to the northeast, that yellow color is R dash one dash seven point five, that is a single-family residential zoning, and those uses are single-family residences. Directly to the east of the subject site is general commercial zoning and that use is an apartment building. South of the site is general commercial zoning and commercial uses. Directly west of the site, of course, is Highway one oh one and further west of Highway one oh one is more general commercial zoning and general commercial uses. The Planning and Community Development Department mailed notice to owners of properties within two hundred and fifty feet of the site on November twelfth, 2019. The NewsGuard published the public hearing notice on November twentieth, 2019. Authority for the planning commission to approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove comes from section seventeen point sixty point zero two zero of the Lincoln City Municipal Code. I listed the applicable substantive criteria, but that was a very abbreviated list and I will give the five specific criteria as soon as I give the background to this application. As Mr. Apicello stated, Title seventeen does not define transitional housing nor list it as permitted or conditionally permitted. I would just like to reiterate that the applicant, which is the City of Lincoln City, prior to applying for the conditional use permit application, applied for a director's interpretation and the director's interpretation was issued on October twenty-first, 2019. That determined that the proposed use for a transitional housing facility must receive conditional use permit approval, finding that the proposed use is similar to the conditional use of an emergency shelter in the general commercial zone. Notice of that administrative decision was mailed to our property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the site on October twenty-first, 2019, and again on October twenty-fourth, 2019. No appeals were received on the director's decision. This request then for a transitional housing facility in a GC zone as a conditional use permit is allowed to proceed based upon the director's interpretation administrative decision.
Why is the city manager the applicant?
The City of Lincoln City is the applicant and the city manager acts as the representative for the City of Lincoln City.
So I, okay, why is the City of Lincoln City the applicant and not the owner of the property?
I will let the applicant address that question. The application was submitted on November seventh, 2019. As I stated, the subject site consists of two lots. I previously gave the addresses. The site contains two existing buildings. The applicant indicates that both buildings will remain. The site also contains a gravel parking lot, fencing, and landscaping. The applicant indicates the transitional housing facility will be operated by Helping Hands, which is a nonprofit organization. The application states that each residence will contain bedrooms, bathrooms, a kitchen, a living room, and a laundry room. The west building will contain an office for the facility manager, case manager, and crisis manager. The facility manager lives at the site. There is also a resident assistant in each building twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The crisis manager and case manager are at the site Monday through Friday, eight to The application also indicated that there are strict guidelines for residents. They have to be clean and sober, actively employed, provide at least ten hours of volunteer service to the community, and attend self-improvement meetings and addiction meetings. Moving on to the analysis, the specific findings made by the planning commission in granting a conditional use permit must be factual and supported by substantial evidence. The burden of producing substantial evidence to support the requisite findings is on the applicant seeking the approval of the conditional use. In order to grant any conditional use, the planning commission must find, based upon evidence, that, and these are the five criteria. Number one, the proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Staff did address this and staff's conclusion was that that criterion is satisfied. Mr. Apicello disagrees with staff and feels that that criterion is not applicable. Based upon the deliberations in the previous hearing, planning commission agreed with Mr. Apicello's assessment that the proposal being in compliance with the comprehensive plan is not applicable and staff will revise its written staff report and concur with Mr. Apicello's assessment that this criteria, number one, is not applicable. The site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use and all yards, spaces, wall, and fences, parking, loading, landscaping, and other features required by this title. Maximum occupancy is determined by the building and fire code through the building permit process. The applicant has not stated the number of individuals proposed for the facility, so staff assumed that the maximum occupancy would be that as allowed by the building and the fire code. This will be a change of occupancy classification. A building permit will need to be submitted for both buildings to change the occupancy classification and as part of that, the building official and the fire marshal will establish a maximum, excuse me, a maximum occupancy for each building. There are no requirements for spaces, walls, or fences in the general commercial zone. The site has an existing gravel parking lot that can be utilized for parking. Chapter seventeen point fifty-six requires that off-street parking be provided and maintained at the time a new building is erected. In this case, a new building is not being erected and there will be no enlargements or additions to the existing buildings. Therefore, the off-street parking space requirement is not applicable pursuant to LCMC seventeen point fifty-six point zero five zero. However, staff has found, when I get down to criteria number four, that to minimize adverse impact, that the existing gravel parking lot should be paved, should be surfaced, and I'll get to that momentarily. Landscaping requirements in Title seventeen only apply when previous developed lots are improved by fifty percent or more of the assessed value of the existing improvements. The written staff report gave details of the assessed value of both tax lots, figuring the, figuring the project valuation level that would need to be met to trigger the fifty percent requirement for landscaping. And that will all be based upon the project valuation that is listed on the building permit applications. Title seventeen also requires upgrading elements of non-conforming development that affect the appearance of a site. Again, that is subject to the percent of the project value. Chapter seventeen point seven four states that at twenty-five percent of the project value, the following elements shall be made compliant with commercial design standards. Those are pedestrian circulation, materials and color, pedestrian spaces, screening and parking area landscaping, water quality, exterior lighting, transparency, and landscaping. In addition to the code requirements of landscaping improvements and upgrading non-conforming elements, the planning commission may impose conditions found necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding property. With application of the code requirements as well as the conditions of approval, criterion number two can be met. Criterion number three, the site for the proposed use relates to streets and highways adequate in width and degree of improvement to handle the quantity and kind of vehicular traffic that would be generated by the proposed use. The proposed transitional housing facility likely The proposed transitional housing facility likely will not add a significant amount of vehicular traffic. The residents typically do not have vehicles. The site has an existing gravel parking lot to accommodate the parking of employees and the few residents who may have vehicles. The site has access from northeast 34th Street via Highway 101. If the project value exceeds 50% of the assessed value, Section 17.52.230 requires infrastructure improvements. Therefore, criterion number three is satisfied with application of the code requirements. Criterion number four, the proposed use will have minimal adverse impact upon adjoining properties and the improvements thereon. In making this determination, the commission shall consider, but not be limited to, the proposed location of the improvements on the site, vehicular egress/ingress, and internal circulation, pedestrian access, setbacks, height and bulk of buildings, walls and fences, landscaping, screening, exterior lighting, and signage. As stated previously, the site is already developed with existing improvements and two existing buildings. The applicant notes that the existing buildings, landscaping, and parking area will remain. Any barbed wire fencing will be removed. The applicant states there are no changes needed to the current vehicular egress/ingress and internal circulation, pedestrian access, landscaping, screening, exterior lighting, or signage, other than removing all the existing signage and any existing barbed wire fencing. The request is not adding any new buildings or improvements to the site that don't already exist. The sites to the south, east, west, and northwest are also in the GC zone. The only portion of the site that is adjacent to a single-family residential is the east 59 feet of the north property line of Tax Lot 300. The nearest portion of the existing building on Tax Lot 300 to the single-family residential zoned lot is 69 feet from the building's northeast corner. So, 69 feet from here to here. And the existing use to the east is an apartment complex, which, of course, is housing. The proposed use includes residential housing. The Fire District and Lincoln City Public Works provided comments. And in addition to the conditions deemed prudent by the Planning Commission, staff has listed possible conditions of approval to mitigate for any adverse impact that may be felt. And with those recommended conditions of approval, as well as the conditions cited by the Fire and Rescue District and the Lincoln City Public Works Department, staff concludes that criterion number four will be met. Criterion number five is not applicable, as the site is not historic, scenic, or containing any cultural attributes. And with that, I am available for questions.
Questions for staff?
I have one.
Steve?
What was the previous use of the building history of that site?
It's been used for several things. To the best of my knowledge, the city used it at one point for storage of vehicles, maintenance vehicles, and prior to that, I do not know.
I can answer that question. At one time, there was a manufacturing there that was sewing. Basically, they made like aprons for waitresses at Denny's and so on. It was named Starcor Corporation there, and they were there for a number of years.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
With the occupancy change, does that require ADA standards be met?
It will.
Okay, so that means there would be an ADA accessible.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm struggling with how this is more similar to an emergency shelter, which is temporary in nature, and multifamily housing, which is the provision of housing 24/7. So, can you explain to me how that, how this is identified as similar to emergency housing or emergency sheltering?
I am interpreting, or doing my best to interpret the former director, because she is the one who made the director's decision. This was before my tenure. An emergency shelter is for homeless individuals. Transitional housing is also aimed for homeless individuals. And it is a transition between being homeless and having permanent housing. And so, it provides housing while they are seeking stability and employment, et cetera. Similar to, an emergency shelter provides overnight accommodation while those individuals are seeking other methods of housing.
Okay.
I can add that the, number one, that decision was already made, and it's not subject to review at this time. It's unappealed decision that the prior planning director made. The multifamily dwellings are actually also a conditional use in the zone, so it really doesn't make much of a difference that if that determination had been made, we'd still be going through the same conditional use process.
But aren't there other conditions that residential properties have to meet that commercial properties don't?
In terms of, yeah, multifamily is subject to the standards of the RM zone. When you do multifamily in a commercial zone.
Okay. Okay, well, the reason I'm asking that is because I read through this proposal, and there could be children living in this facility 24/7, and I see no provision for any place for them to play outside. Just one thought.
That is why staff...
Whereas with the residential, I believe that there is a requirement for multifamily to have common area for kids.
And staff made that as a recommended condition of approval, a gathering area.
Well, a gathering area with a smoking area and blah, blah, I didn't get that as a child's play area.
No.
Those are different things to me.
Madam Chair.
Okay, yes, Lenny.
I had the exact same thought that you had, which is there's no place for children. And since there's going to be families here, one assumes there are going to be some children. What I was thinking as I was looking at that, that east half of that second lot is gravel right now. The only place there's any grass on there is on the southeast corner of that second lot. But it's at a serious grade, and it wasn't any place I would have children wanting to play. But if you took part of that back lot, instead of turning it into asphalt, turn it into a place where children could play with some kind of non-abrasive surface, grass, sodas, something like that, that would, and then clearly somehow delineated between the parking and that play area, I would think that would be a suitable thing to do. She's right, there's no place for children to play there. You certainly don't want them playing in the front of the building.
That's certainly a condition that the commission can recommend as part of their approval.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, applicant's presentation.
Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, it's a great pleasure for me to be with you tonight. I asked our planning director if I could take just a few minutes at the beginning of this to talk about the city's role and as to why it is the applicant. Let me begin with about 10 months ago, the city council was establishing their priorities for the city, and that would be for the fiscal year that we're in. One of those priorities was the area of community support. It's community support services. Specifically, community support services would provide assistance to individuals and families that are in need. And then the tasks associated that would be to assess the city's needs for community support services, and then partner with nonprofit organizations that provide community support services, and consider the opportunities to provide those services, facilities for the nonprofit organizations. The city has had a history, and several hundred thousand dollars' worth of history, of providing support to different organizations that help the homeless. When we looked at the assessing the city's needs for these community support services, one area that we found was missing was the transitional housing area. Now, we have a group in town that's absolutely fantastic, and that's Family Promise, but they're very much geared to just families. We were looking to also for those who might not have families where the transitional support. And so, and with much consideration by the city council, three of our council members began an active search for a partnership. The city has determined a long time ago that the best way we can help the homeless is to support those organizations that provide the services. So, three of our council members researched and came to meet and to know the representatives of the Helping Hands that have an operation, a transitional housing operation in Tillamook County, in Astoria, and in Lincoln City. They've been here for many years, and they'll talk a little bit about that. The reason why this, and so, after, again, much discussion with the city council on this, they determined that they wanted to go forward with this partnership. And part of that would be for the city to purchase property that could be used for transitional housing. After months of searching, we located this property and felt that the area, the location, the zoning of it, all fit very well. Now, the reason why the city is the applicant instead of the existing property owner is because we have made an offer on the property. And one of the conditions of the offer is that the land use approval process is completed before we consummate that purchase. And so, it's not really, while it is in the interest of the property owners for us to get that conditional use permit, it is not conditional for them to be able to sell the property. If it doesn't work for us, they'll continue to try to sell it to somebody else. But it is critical for the city, if we are to acquire this property, that we receive the land use approval. If we fail to receive the conditional use permit, then the city would not go forward and purchase the property.
So, the improvements to the property contemplated in this proposal would be funded by the city or by the current owner?
Yeah. I'm not sure I can get into a lot of detail on that, because those have not been disclosed, but it is a combination of both. The initial purchase of the property would be by the city. One of the other final conclusions is that we would, as far as the purchase of the property, is that we will end up in an approved agreement with the Helping Hands organization. If we fail to come to an agreement on that, then we will not purchase the property. And I'm not at liberty to disclose all of the details.
So, there's three players involved?
There are.
Okay.
Yeah, there's the seller, there's us, and then there's Helping Hands. I might point out that this is a bit of an awkward and rare situation, where I have one hat that says I'm the city manager, and I have another hat that says I'm representing the property purchasers on this. I might point out that in all of the work that was done by Lindsey Zemille and now has been done by our current planning director, Anne Marie Skinner, I have tried to keep as much as I can at arm's length. As a matter of fact, the document that you have before you, almost all of that, I chose not to read until after the packet was put together. I did not want to feel I was going to be put into a place where I was going to tell Anne Marie, "Oh, you better make it work for us, or else you're in trouble." And so, we tried to keep that...
You don't think that's implied at all?
With our staff, no. We have the staff with the highest integrity. And so, although I did consult quite a bit with Anne Marie on process and how to go forward, including how do I be able to testify and then turn the time over to the Helping Hands, we tried to stay very careful away from that. You have in that, in the staff report, some information from the Public Works staff. Now, that was sent to me, okay? And I read through it. It's kind of interesting being on the other side of it. Makes me a little more sympathetic to developers. But as I read that, I did, that was written by Daniel Wentz of our Public Works Department. I have not talked to him about that. The only conversations I've really had with that is, again, with Anne Marie, a little bit on our ordinances. What is actually required in our ordinance is what's not required in our ordinance is the same kind of conversation a developer would have. So, we've tried to keep that, we've tried to keep that as separate as much as we can. Now, unless you have questions for me, I would never presume that I could speak well for Helping Hands. They are best to speak for themselves, because ultimately, they are really the key people that will be operating this facility. So, do you have any questions for me?
Yes. Yes. If Helping Hands doesn't go, eventually leaves this project for whatever reason, will the city then retain the property? And if so, will they try to find another partner, or what will happen?
Well, let me, there's two kinds of answers to that.
Let's go for the integrity one.
If we fail to obtain the conditional use permit, or if we fail to come to an agreement with Helping Hands, we will not purchase the property. However, if we purchase the property because those two things were met, and a few years down the road, there becomes a problem, that is part of what we're negotiating now on how to protect the city. And like I said, I'm not really, at this point, at liberty to talk about the terms of a contract that we will have with them, but we are trying to make sure that we protect the city in case something happens with our partnership down the road.
There will be a public hearing on the 9th of December before the city council, where all the terms of the proposed disposition of property will be given. And it's a notice public hearing, and any citizen of Lincoln City may speak.
What kind of hearing is it?
ORS 221-725 requires a public hearing whenever the city disposes of real property, which can include a conveyance to a not-for-profit organization with or without consideration.
So, Ron, I just want to be clear. I understand how the players are involved. The current owners are selling the property, and they may or may not have some involvement in the necessary adjustments to the property needed for it to function as you anticipate. The city is, would be the facility owner...
We are the buyer of the property.
Buyer of the property. And Helping Hands will be operating the transitional housing activity within the property.
Yes.
Who's responsible for the construction and changes necessary to bring it up to the level that it's then...
In this case, it would be Helping Hands. That would be part of our agreement with them, is that they would make the renovations necessary on this property.
So, all of my questions regarding how many people are proposed and how the construction and all of that goes to them?
It really would.
Okay. But you're going to be here in case they want you to answer.
I will. I'm going to let them all come up, but I'll take their seats. I might point out one thing. I'm going to, first, I'm going to, as the applicant, and then I'm going to speak a little bit as the city manager. There was a question about the interpretation of our previous director, and whether or not it fits within the general commercial zone. I might point out that the definition that we have been using with Helping I might point out that the definition that we have been using with Helping Hands as to what transitional housing is, is that it is a project that is designed, that is designed to provide housing and appropriate supportive services to homeless purpose persons to facilitate movement to independent living. That is our intent. That is what we are hoping to accomplish this. Now, I'm going to put my city manager hat on for just a minute. As I mentioned, I did not look at the packet. It's unfortunate that this and the zoning question came up on the same agenda because as far as the applicant, me, the city, is concerned, we have all of the permissions that we need to proceed under the existing zoning ordinance. And the fact that they're both together, I believe, confuses it. If I, if I was, if this was not the city who was applying, I might very well have said, "Push the zoning off to another day so it doesn't confuse the fact that we don't, that the applicant doesn't need the zoning in order to move forward because the planning commission, or the planning director has already rendered that decision that allows us."
Right, and you can see we're easily confused.
It is confusing.
Yeah.
But you do need the conditional use even.
We need the conditional use. But anyways, I, that's, like I said, I purposely stayed away from even looking at the agenda. So, until after it was published, I didn't even realize that was on the agenda. So, because I try to keep my hands away from that as much as possible and let our staff do their thing, which they do very, very well.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're ready for the applicant's presentation.
I'd like to point out that the city's intention, and this is advertised, is to dispose of the property, that is to convey to Helping Hands the property. And it will have a condition, a fee simple determinable in the deed to, that says that if they fail to use it for transitional housing, it will revert to the city. And this is a textbook deed restriction. Also, also advertised was, we might require additional security by way of a trust deed and promissory note for the purchase price, that they will basically pay us an installment payment on the, of the purchase price to be waived if they operate a transitional housing facility. And we did the same kind of thing with the food bank and to some extent with the lease with the cultural center. So, it's, those are advertised terms. I'm not sure the app, Helping Hands knows all of that, but I, I believe it's been shared with them. So.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Chair Commissioners. We're excited to be here tonight. We're a little tired. We've been on the road for a little bit.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Alan Evans and I am the CEO and founder of Helping Hands Reentry Outreach Centers. And this is Raven Russell, and she is part of our development team. And tonight, we're going to give you a presentation about who we are and what we do.
Okay.
Helping Hands is an organization that runs 11 facilities in four counties in Oregon, class up Yamhill, Lincoln, and Tillamook Counties. We provide over 200 beds for men, women, and children that find themselves in situations of communities that are beyond their, their means. Assistance in affordable housing is at a record low in most places. And what we're finding out now is, a little history of me, I was homeless for 27 years from the age of 14 till I was 38. I drug my bag of clothes down this highway right here in front of us. Found myself homeless in Seaside, knocking on every door saying, "I need assistance. Help me." I tried to get food stamps. They told me I needed ID. I tried to get ID. They told me I needed a residence. I wanted a residence, but I had no money. And I'm also a survivor of sexual abuse as a child and physical abuse. That was traumatic. And it kept me in a cycle for a long time. You see what was happening on the inside of me and what people seen on the outside of me as a panhandle were two different things. I was called lots of names. 18 years ago, I had an opportunity to change my life in Seaside, Oregon, where I went to every door I could find. And I found that the only way that I could get help was to break the law, that getting arrested becomes getting rescued when communities don't provide opportunities and resources for people to change their life. People die without shelter. People die without resources. And you're in kind of a weird predicament here because your county is extremely long in finding access to the services and access to at least some sort of transitional housing. There's a huge gap there. Access to affordable housing in this county is about 0.07%. And what's happening today is people are applying for apartments when they come up and 80 people apply for the same apartment. And as landlords, people have the choice to pick who they want. And so, there's a possible, a population of people that get pushed into an impossible situation. And that's what we're finding in all of the counties that we serve. We've been doing this for 18 years. I started a small facility in Seaside, Oregon for eight men. And now, we're one of the largest homeless reentry programs in the state. We do that with, with some planning. We promote public safety. We've came to the conclusion that what we need to do is similar to an IEP in a school is we need to put individual reentry plans together for people. And we need to know what we're talking about. And so, we created a database just over three years ago that allows us to access that. So, every person who gets sent to us, for one, our organization is a referral-only organization. You cannot walk to the front door and receive help. You can't walk to the front door and drag a bag. You can't push a shopping cart. You can't do anything and get to our front door without access to another agency in this community or a situation where you're asking for help. This gives us the opportunity to vet people properly because we serve families. And I know it's really hard for us to understand that children are part of this, but 10% of the people we serve are homeless children and families. 30% of the people we serve are families in need. 18% of the people we serve are senior citizens that can't sustain their housing. For every one person we see on the street, there's four people that we don't see that are in situations. Women with children are pushed into situations where they have to make unbelievable decisions to find themselves safe. And without assistance in a community, they're at risk. In order to get into our facility, you have to have a referral from another agency. And we found out some pretty amazing things. So, every person who gets sent to us does an intake. This intake allows us to keep solid numbers on the people we serve because we ask a series of questions and also gives us the ability to know who is in our facility at any given day, how many meals we serve, how many showers we feed, how many plans that we put together. It also gives us the ability that every single evening after our intake is done, and it's, it's a 24-hour facility, but an intake's done, that a roster gets sent to our local police department so everybody and our partnering agencies, so everybody in the community knows that we're all working together as a team to help a person and assist them back into reentry into the community. And our board consists of two-thirds of the people on our board are police officers and mayors and, and prominent people in communities because we're all working together as a team. This also gives us the ability to understand general demographics. Helping Hands is split up so we know gender, head of household, veteran. 8% of the people we serve are veterans by race, ethnicity, also by who sends people to us. I mean, it's really important for us to understand where people are coming from. And it also gives us the ability to find out if a person has their, their children with them, are they in parental custody, are they in custody of friends, are they by the state? We make all the decisions in our organization based off of the information that we gather from the people we serve. And we found some amazing things out over time is that the people we believe are homeless and the stigma, as you put it, is different. Because what we're dealing with today is we're dealing with people, let's go to chronic homelessness. 38% of the people we serve have been homeless over two or three times in a year, or two or three times in the last two years. Less, just at 50% of them have suffered with drug or alcohol addiction in, in their life. 31% of them have had a history of crime. This one's pretty amazing. 30% of the people that we serve in the communities we serve have a history of mental illness, but less than 4% of those people are being treated. So, we know that, that even though services are provided in a community, if they're unreachable for people, there's a high need there. And that causes our police department to have to work overtime to go to these places to figure this out. Disability and 21% of the people we serve are victims of domestic violence. Helping Hands is an agency that's worked really hard to do a couple of things. One is to promote public safety, to make sure our communication with law enforcement and our partnering agencies all understand what it is we're doing. We're also an expert in the field of reusing buildings. We've got a finished boarding house that was built in 1896 in Astoria that houses 60 people today with reentry housing and emergen-- was that my beeper?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. All right, I'm done. We, we bought a World War II Naval Command Center that we partnered with in Tillamook that is, is right next to the Air Museum. And it's an amazing thing. We have multiple facilities in multiple locations. We hardly have any problems because we set our rules straight upfront. You've got to be clean and sober. You're going to want to be clean and sober. We provide you with emergency shelter. You cannot be a sex offender. And we are going to fight for you and we're going to evaluate your needs and your obstacles when you come in our door. And we're going to put together an individual reentry plan for you that's going to help reintegrate you back into society with the toolbox you need to sustain affordable housing. We also gathered data to know how much affordable housing is in a community and where resources are missing. And that's what we're planning to do.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I, I have some questions for you and they don't have to do necessarily with your mission statement or, or your background, but they have to do with the use of this building for this particular use. So, you prepared to answer some of those questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. How many people are you proposing to have in each building?
As many as were allowed.
How will you determine that?
By the fire department.
So, you intend?
Occupancy. I mean, we, as we seek and move forward, we have to lean on the professionals in the community of what allowances are in the, in the facilities that we're looking at. You know, in, in, how much need is there? Probably for 50 beds that allow us to do that, but it all depends on the fire.
Okay. So, so your intent is to initially, your next step, if you were to receive this approval for this would be to talk to the fire department, have them come out, do a walkthrough, and you would evaluate, I'm looking at you two, Ron. Evaluate how many people and how, I mean, it's, there's, I, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around this because there are.
It's complex, we know.
Well, and there's construction and there's additions and there are requirements that are tied to the amount, the cost of those construction changes. And so, I'm just trying to understand.
And we've been through this multiple times in multiple communities. And so, we have experience in the field. We, we have to look at what we would like to do for a layout and we'd have to, we have to meet with an architect to, to see what that layout is. And then, we have to, to ask the fire marshal if this occupancy is, is doable and usable in this thing. And so, we lean on the professionals to make that happen. There's staged progress that has to happen in, in putting these kind of projects together because we've done this with commercial buildings in multiple locations.
Okay. And, and, well, and one of the reasons I'm asking this is because in looking at your application, as you, as you commented on, in the, in our packet, your application going through the applicable criteria, the definitions of things seem to be in flux. It's, it's residential in that you contend that it approaches a need for affordable and workforce housing, which I would think it's not necessarily affordable and workforce. This transitional housing seems to have a different intent than that. And then, it's not residential in other definitions. So, it, it's residential housing for people, correct? You're providing?
It is reentry housing and it's a program that people are involved with. When they get to the point where they could pay a little bit of dues, you know, we, we do not charge rent to people.
Okay. But people will reside in this facility?
They will temporarily stay here until we find them affordable housing, yes.
Okay. And that temporary stay could be in terms of weeks, up to a year? So, they would live there?
Yeah.
Okay. Their children would live there?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, my issue is in looking at, you know, this, our, our criteria number two, the site is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use and all the yard spaces and walls. Kids need a place to play. I don't see any provision for any place for kids to play on this lot. I understand the barbed wire is going to be removed. That's nice. But as my understanding, this site is chain link fenced, right?
Yeah.
So, any thought of maybe adding landscaping to soften the look of a chain link fenced location?
Yeah. So, in our facilities, in all of our facilities, there are playgrounds in our, in our facilities that we serve families in. There are classrooms. There are daycare. There is, is opportunities for children of all ages, including classes and including a place to play.
So, why isn't any of that included in this application?
It's within the, it's within the facility, correct?
It is.
That's within the facility.
So, they play inside? They don't have an outside?
We have full playgrounds outside of some of our buildings, yes.
What am I missing here, Ron? I didn't see any exterior changes, no landscaping. The only change is the removal of the barbed wire.
I think that what you see in there is the request of your planning department to add those things in there. If you recall, there's a request to, in the areas that's, that abut the residential areas, your planning department is asking that wood fencing be put up. They asked for an area that outside that's called common area. Now, what I've heard from you so far is that that may not be what you're really interested in, not in a place outside where you can smoke or think, or congregate in that sense, but a place where kids could play. So, those are, those are things that you will be considering as you look at conditions that you would place upon us as the applicants.
Okay.
And it is within our normal operations for, as Alan stated, to provide a playground when we have a facility that serves families. And as development director, I can tell you that we have some designated funding from donors who have specified they want us to use.
I appreciate that, but understand that all we're looking at is what's provided here. I'm, I'm not familiar with what you typically do in other locations.
I understand. I was just trying to address your concern.
Yeah.
I think the other point to, point to bring out is that we have not applied yet for a building permit. So, the design plans and all of that and the landscaping plans, which are all required as part of the building permit process have not been submitted because we have not applied for a building permit yet.
Okay. But we are looking at whether or not this is consistent with these zoning criteria and...
We will comply with the city's zoning laws.
For commercial development, not residential.
For whatever is required in that zone.
I'm going to let somebody else ask a question.
I have a question. So, if I'm not mistaken, it does say in here that you, in addition to the transitional housing, also offer an emergency shelter? Is, or is that tied together?
Yeah. It, it's all tied together. I mean, there's a portion of it when a person comes in and they're going through the intake process, that they'd be able to have a, a place to sleep, the meal, the shower, the decompression piece. And then, our, our initial, are you interested in this longer-term program? It's, it's a vetting process for, I mean, while we do vetting before a person gets to us, we also have to allow a person, and I know from experience, to decompress a little bit, to trust.
Yeah. It was just a little confusing because you mentioned that no one is able to really just walk up to your door. And so, I was looking at the flyer and it shows, you know, emergency shelter schedule, check-in 5:00 PM daily, check-out at 8:00. Is that someone who is referred to you from, say, they go to Health and Human Services or they go somewhere hypothetically like chance that would be if they had, you know, would... would be full? So it's just a referral system?
Yeah, it's a referral system that the person gives us. Absolutely. Yeah, we work very close with the police department.
Right, so they might find someone.
And there's procedures ahead of time on how to do that. I mean, you can't have somebody that's in a manic state be dropped off at the door because we're not equipped for that, but we want to assist everybody that has a story, if we can.
So that is an element, along with whether they do participate in the transitional housing and all of that, that it would be another facility available?
Right.
Would the residents have access to the building during the day?
Yeah, it's a 24-hour...
That's where they live.
Right, right. So, but you were saying, something you said made me think...
That it would be an emergency shelter in addition. If I, if I, we already have some transitional housing in Lincoln City. It's just that this one, this is, the zoning that it's in is the general commercial, which is unique to this situation.
We've had a facility for 12 years, 80 blocks from this place, that serves men and has for quite some time without any issues, or it's kind of what we do.
How many people are you serving at that center and have for 12 years?
Nine people in this house. We, at one time, we had five facilities. We, I ran, I started thugs off drugs. I'm the guy who started the program during the meth epidemic to help drug addicts get off the street. That has worked its way in because, for one, eventually that name, while it worked at that time, women and children and mothers and seniors started showing up at the door going, wow, I don't know if I qualified to be here. So we kind of changed the way we...
He's a thug.
For this.
Thank you.
With Z's.
Yeah, with Z's are important.
And you have a program too where your residents, volunteer, and other organizations? Could you tell us a bit about that?
Yeah, so everybody who comes in is required to give time back to the community. Last year, we gave $1.3 million of volunteer hours back to the communities we serve, which is pretty outstanding. It also builds relationships with business owners and opportunities for people to be employed in the community as they see that they're just... Oh, I did it again.
Yay.
I have this tendency to turn on my head. This is my good ear.
Are you familiar with the, with the comments and requirements that are included in the packet from the North Lincoln Fire and Rescue District and also the Public Works Department?
Yes, we are.
And are you prepared to meet those conditions?
Yes, we are.
Do you have other questions? Is it really true that the kids don't have any visitors?
Is it true that children don't have visitors?
You make a comment that, well, you know, there are several comments, and, you know, on average, only 60%, 16% of the residents have cars at the site. I don't know where you pull that.
We have the data from every single...
But you don't know how many people are going to be at this site?
We have 18 years' experience pulling the information, and that's...
16% is a fairly specific number to not know how many people are going to be there. What if you have two adults and 12 kids?
May I answer? Okay, I'm, why you don't believe it, every single person who comes to our facility fills out a questionnaire that we put right into this system, and when they come to us with no car, we say there's no car. And so we take the information of the thousands of people that we've served in the communities we serve, and we come up with that answer because that's the percentage we have from the people that come to our door. So we use that as an example because it's data that we have collected, drilled down to the people we serve, and that is the number, average number of people who have cars that show up at our facilities.
Okay.
It's actually currently 13%. At the time that the application submitted, it was 16, but this, our database has live data within 24 hours, so for privacy reasons, I can't click it and show you, but if I were to click this pie chart segment, it would drill it down to the exact individuals that owned vehicles and stayed at our facilities. So it is unduplicated data. It is very accurate. And as Alan stated, we have 11 facilities in four counties, so this is aggregate data for the homeless population that we've been serving in multiple communities.
And they don't have any guests or visitors?
Well, at times, there is. I mean, there's common areas, there's classrooms, there's opportunities. So we're very protective of who can come in and out of the living portions of where it is because we want to protect the people we serve. But there are common areas that people come in, meetings come in, classrooms come in, visitors can come in, but we're very cautious of that. Everything we do is run off of cameras, and we know that when we have 18% of the people we serve are victims of domestic violence, who shows up at our facility is important to us to keep those people safe.
Sure.
And it's important for us to keep the children safe, to make sure that no sex offenders come on site. We do it pretty good.
It's just somewhat heartbreaking to read that the kids don't have any visitors.
Well, I see the way you're taking it. When we answer that it's not that way, we're hoping that you believe that.
Okay, okay. Other questions? Anybody? Okay, do you have anything else you want to add?
Nothing, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is now the time for testimony in support of the application. Make sure I've got them in the right order. Jerry Palmer. Ah, Jerry.
We know that guy.
I know that guy.
Thank you. I'm Chief Jerry Palmer with the Lincoln City Police Department, and the reason I asked or signed up today is that it just so happens, not knowing that this particular thing was on the agenda tonight, but finding out as I arrived at the meeting, that I wanted to bring to your attention that I recently have been contacted by Chief Jeff Sprague of Astoria Police Department and Chief Shimerhorn at Cannon Beach.
They're on your board, right?
Right. On completely different topics that we were discussing, and in the course of that conversation, those chiefs made a point to talk to me, hearing that Helping Hands was looking for new facilities here in our city. I've known that they've existed here for a long time. We haven't had any issues with that organization at all, but Chief Sprague and Chief Shimerhorn said that their partnership in the northwest corner of the state has been spectacular. It's an amazing resource that brings a much-needed facility to their communities and have been outstanding community partners.
Any questions for Chief Palmer? Thank you. Okay, we don't have any neutral, or we did, but somebody erased them, so...
Teach you to be neutral.
I hope it was them that did. Robert Kilpatrick.
Good evening. Is it possible to have the layout back on the...
The map up?
Matt, right there.
I think we can do that.
Yes, it'll be fine.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to say I was very impressed with what these folks said as far as Helping Hands. When I got this notice, for my first reaction was panic from the standpoint of what the definition of transitional housing is or could be, and their situation seems to be much more palatable than what I originally thought. My property, oh, okay, yeah, my property was 2206 and the adjacent vacant lot to the west. I own both of those pieces of property. My concern was based on when I purchased the property and the fact that I've had break-ins since then. My first break-in was when I was in the process of moving in, and we don't live there year round. It's a vacation home for us. And my first concern was with a form of transitional housing and the people that would be occupying it, that the likelihood of future break-ins would be substantially higher, simply from the standpoint that they're out in the streets during the day, and when you bring more of those people into the neighborhood, particularly with houses that are vacant, it offers quite an opportunity. I don't see that with what these folks right here are proposing, if in effect what you read what's going to happen as far as the property, the people that are employed and so forth. So that's a plus. But I am concerned by one of the same things that you said. Living there, I know what has gone on, I know the property, I know the parking lot, and for kids to be on, with, living there and having no access to any real property to play on with two streets surrounding it, the likelihood of that being the only place that they could go, I find that a little bit disconcerting. The property, in terms of the fencing that is around the property now, is, needs to be replaced, not just because of the barbed wire, but because it's not that substantial. I've had to add my own fencing around parts of my property to keep people from passing through because the lower part of my house with a door to the basement area was an easy break-in, particularly at night. I've still got the door that were chiseled out around the locks and so forth to get in. That happened when I first, when we first purchased the property. My only concern now is that the people that are there and the children that are there, there's really no place for kids. And I don't mean that derogatorily, but right on the bottom, right here, there's a six, about a six-foot wall all the way along here to the base of my property, and the fence is actually where this green area is at. And it's really not big enough to have cars and kids playing in the same property. And I think before anybody made that decision for your use, you ought to look at it and go there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sherry Kilpatrick. Oh, okay, you don't want to speak. Okay, okay. Anybody else that didn't sign up that wants to speak? Okay, any testimony from representatives of public agencies? All right. You didn't really reserve any of your time for rebuttal. I don't know if you have any other comments. Yes, yes, Mr. Evans. Okay, okay, all right. Okay, ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6A states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does anyone who participated tonight desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? Don't see anybody. Does the applicant waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record as provided in ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6E? I know you know that well. You're waiving it. Okay, great.
You probably want to do a motion to close the hearing and the record.
Yeah, I'm there now. Okay, do I have a motion to close the hearing? Can we do it at the same time? One motion? Do I have a motion to close the hearing and the record?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, closed. Okay, you can ask city staff or the city attorney any clarification, questions based on what you've heard tonight. You cannot ask them for new evidence. So don't even try that.
Oh, shucks.
Yeah, I know.
I was going to take a run.
So the matter is on the table for deliberation. Comments, questions, concerns?
I have one comment. I would change, I think we should approve this with this application with some of the conditions that were listed, except for the second one, and I think somehow we should convert that into creating a play area for children or installing landscaping in the parking area.
Where are you?
I'm on Packet Page 107.
Oh, boy, I didn't know that. Okay, so the first, all right, so you want to change one of them to include children's...
Right, I think, you know, eliminate the smoking station and the table and benches and convert that into a play area for children that might be living at the site.
So not have a, not have an adult gathering place out there, but make it more a...
Children-oriented.
A children-oriented space? Okay.
That would be acceptable to me.
That would be acceptable.
Yeah, the adults can play in the street if they'd like.
I'm not even going there. All right, any other suggested conditions?
I think we should talk about landscaping. Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with the building. I've driven by it quite a few times, and it is very, it's one of the more industrial-looking buildings in that part of town, but I also think this is a really good place for transitional housing because there is workforce housing, residential, right behind it with the apartment complexes. It's accessible to Highway 101, pretty central for people that are needing access and don't have vehicles, but, but the, you know, the landscape and the...
It's stark.
It is, yeah. And I think if, you know, considering, you know, what they said, people, you know, are there for six to 12 months, and I think we all know how Lincoln City is, there's only as many rentals as there are available. I could see even potentially longer than that, people trying to find a place, so...
So this, the staff, in addition to the suggestions from Fire and Rescue and also Public Works, the staff suggested a condition prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the traditional housing facility, install a six-foot-tall solid wood fence along the north property line, which, which would include your property line, and also...
It's north and...
It has tax lots 500...
North and east population.
North and east, okay, to provide a buffer and screening between the uses to the north and east. And I, you know, I think the south fence could use some updating as well, some type...
I think the south one's the one with the barbed across...
Well, I think there's barbed wire around all of it.
Yeah, I think so.
Chain link, but the chain link is not very attractive.
If the commission desires to modify that condition, just beware that the applicant would not be able to fence the entire south with a six-foot-tall fence because that is the approach, and so the fence will have to meet clear vision standards, meaning the area around the, around the approach cannot be fenced with a six-foot-tall fence.
Right, but it could be, I mean, as, I drive by it all the time, too, and I'm trying to remember, there's vegetation along part of that fence.
It's along the south side.
It's along the south side, right up towards the other building.
So landscaping could be added to soften that fence line with, and still maintain clear vision, right?
It could be. And so, so the commissioners are aware, and to further clarify what was stated in the staff report, the code requires, flat out, that if the project value reaches 50% or more...
Right.
Then the landscaping has to be brought up to code. So the, the very fact of them submitting the building permit application could already, could already mean that they will have to meet the landscaping requirements. So a condition would be if they don't meet 50%, if the planning commission still wants them to bring landscaping up to the code requirements.
So let's make it really complicated. So it's like 100, it's over $100,000 of improvements to hit the 50% threshold, right?
167, I think.
Yeah, I broke it down. And it's by building because there will be a building permit for each building. And so it will...
So you're suggesting we leave, that this is only an if-then? So if they do not meet that 50, or they don't come up to that 50% threshold, then this landscaping requirement kicks in?
If they come up to the 50% threshold, then they have to meet the landscaping requirements of the code.
Right.
If they don't, then there are no landscaping requirements.
Right, and we want landscaping requirements regardless.
So that's what I'm suggesting. If the planning commission wants landscaping regardless...
Yes.
Then that will need to be a condition. Because the code already requires landscaping if they meet the 50%.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a roll of the dice. And I think, I'm speaking for the commission here, but I think that we all would like to see landscaping to soften that fencing and to make it more of a, even though it isn't a residence, it is a residential location, so.
Yeah, I think with, you know, it being an occupancy change and how big the building is and needing to be brought up to ADA and talking about paving the parking lot, I could see how very easily you could reach that $167,000 mark. But, I mean, I think the easiest thing to do would be just require the landscaping as a condition.
Is it paved or not?
It's not paved.
Partially.
Kind of right along the second building to the east. As far as we could determine, that looks like it's paved out about 15 feet or so. And then the back part is, it looks like it's compacted gravel.
Okay, so one of the Public Works' conditions is that it would be paved.
Yeah.
But I...
Condition number five.
Yeah, but I, I, how do we carve out a section for a play area that's not paved? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If that condition says that it all needs to be paved, then...
We could change it, say it needs to be paved with the exception of, you know, an eight-by-eight minimum or whatever play area.
I don't think we should determine the size of the playground area, but I think that we should leave that up to these folks. But substantial enough for children to have a swing or whatever they do, yeah.
Whatever they do.
I can't remember, it's too long ago.
Okay.
Swing and a slide. I have five acres from mine, just...
Okay. And then there's an issue with drainage. That's all going to be dealt with during the building permit process, I assume?
Yes.
Sidewalk, is there going to be a requirement for a sidewalk to be installed? Public Works says sidewalk shall be installed.
Public Works is asking that sidewalk be installed. The code requires, again, this goes back to the 50%. What the code requirement is, is that if the project value reaches 50% or more...
Right.
Then there are certain infrastructure improvements that are required. However, the code also allows for the city manager or his designee to defer those improvements or do an in-lu fee. So the question for the commission is, would you like to require those regardless of the 50%? Or would you like to go with the code requirement?
And your recommendation is to have that as a condition of approval. All requirements of the Lincoln City Public Works Department shall be met, including those specifically cited in the comments above.
Yes, that is what the Public Works Department is requesting.
Okay, and your...
And I'm citing the Public Works...
Is not, in addition to conditions deemed prudent by the planning commission...
Yes.
Is, I think, your language.
Yes.
So, how do we feel about sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
I mean, there's no sidewalk...
There, anywhere there.
There's no sidewalk to the east of the property, right, on 34th? Is there a side, there's no sidewalk there?
No.
On either side of the street.
There's a fence there.
So it would be kind of a hanging sidewalk along that building only.
Correct.
Skip the sidewalks.
Yeah, I think skip the sidewalks. No. You are the applicant. Yes, please, I'm sorry.
No, you're not. The hearing's closed and the record's closed.
You lose.
No.
You're the applicant.
Okay. All right, and then I assume the building permit will address the existing sewer and water service is adequate or not, based on what the plan is for a number of people, number of toilets, number of, all of that, right?
Correct. There do not need to be any specific conditions related to sewer or water facilities or fire and life safety, building code, et cetera, because that all goes without saying that that is required as part of the occupancy classification.
Okay, so we don't need to deal with the fire and rescue issues as well, right? Okay. So, so what I have for conditions are only two or three. The fencing, the provision of a, of a play area, somehow segregated from the parking area, so a safe play area, and landscaping to soften the fencing around the property. Did I miss something?
All building and fire code requirements shall be met prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the transitional housing. That's the condition.
Yeah, and that's in the, that would be associated with the, with the successful building permit, right?
Correct. That one really doesn't need to be there.
Need to be there, okay.
Okay, anything else? Am I missing anything?
Do you mean to leave out the, which I'm in favor of, leaving out the storm sewer issue? Stormwater runoff issue?
The...
That's part of the public...
I understood that that would be associated with the building permit.
Correct. They will, they will, that'll have to be addressed as part of the paving, the grading and erosion control permit that goes with the building permit.
So we don't have to make it a separate condition? Anything else? Okay, are we ready? A motion.
I move that we accept the conditional, we approve the conditional use. I don't catch the number right off. Where am I?
2019-04.
Yeah, transitional housing with the conditions as noted by the commission.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay. There you go.
So we'll have to come back with a final order on this...
Yes.
Because we don't have one prepared right now. So the commissioner, we want to talk about, I know there's seven of you here, we should probably have four of you come in for a meeting to approve the final order. It's either that or you would delegate to the chair to approve the final order.
I move that we delegate to the chair that we approve the final order.
Second.
Wait a minute.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, opposed, doesn't matter, does it? Okay. All right. When, when might you want to see me in your office, Richard?
Not 8:00 AM. Give me a couple days to make sure we've got it right, so.
Okay.
Does it make sense, or this will be fast?
It might be fast. Yeah, I'm thinking it's going to be fast. But that's just my, where am I here? Okay. It's now 8:41 PM. Does anybody need a break?
Yes.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Don't engage in any ex parte communications during the break.
Yeah, nobody talk to anybody.
Well, the next thing's a CUP.
Don't even talk to yourself.
Weren't we having another meeting this month? I thought the 19th we were meeting.
One more meeting this year, 17.
But anyway, doesn't matter.
Oh, maybe not. Hopefully, we don't.
Well, I think we have a bunch of things that are noticed for hearing on that.
Well, you have to hurry up and do this before you get on the jury. Remember the, the meeting we had when we were talking about family promise and making it okay for churches to house them? I came that day after getting out of the jury. Got here just in time.
Never put me on a jury because, you know...
Oh, yeah.
Technically, I'm the prosecutor here, so no criminal defense attorney is going to want me on a jury. As much as a prosecutor's going to want me on, the defense won't. So I'll never be on the jury.
I think I've gotten the letter like 14 or 15 times and never...
Going on here.
Well, I probably just came here looking here. Well, I don't want that guy.
Pretty much.
It's interesting, though. I've been on three juries, all the time.
Pedal jury when I was in college. If the case settled, you know, so I never really got into it. Definitely put me off going to law school.
Dad was on a federal grand jury for six months.
That would be interesting, to be on a grand jury. I would like to do that.
He enjoyed it, but it was a huge, huge time city.
Oh, it is, yeah.
In two weeks. Yeah, that would have made a lot of sense.
Having fun yet?
Aren't we? Don't you think?
Yeah, why not?
But I don't get to talk to you about the next one.
Because we don't want to appear to just be pushovers. Sorry, there are three things on the item, one has to go.
We're losing our audience.
Yeah, I know. It's not fun anymore.
How are you doing, Myles?
I think we may be ready for a press... This was a little more difficult, but I think you...
About sidewalks? No.
You can't tell us anything.
This has been a good experience to be on the other...
It's always good, isn't it?
That's true.
It's amazing, isn't it?
You should write an affidavit about that.
Yeah. Whoops.
Could I ask the chair, I was unfortunately under the impression we didn't have another planning commission this month, which is why I asked for a delegation to the chair to sign.
Yes.
So since you do have a meeting in two weeks, I think it would probably be more appropriate for the full commission to review the final order. So that would take a, someone that voted in favor of that would ask for a motion to reconsider, and then if it's voted to reconsider, then you would make a motion to bring back the final order in two weeks, so.
Okay.
I think I made the original motion.
You did?
Yeah, first I want to know how much she paid you to make that decision. Okay.
I accept chocolate chip cookies.
Hey, my, my kind of bribe also. You want, what, a motion to bring it back in two weeks?
Reconsider.
Reconsider.
First, a motion to reconsider.
Okay, motion to reconsider.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And so now you would make a motion to bring back the final order for signature at your next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, dodged that bullet and...
Chocolate chip cookies will be available.
So it will be brought back at our next meeting. Okay, now, we're on record again, and we're at item number 5.4, which is ZOA 2019-13... which is ZOA 2019-13 Transitional Housing. It is now 8:50, and the hearing is now open to accept public comment on file 70A 2019-13 Transitional Housing. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Chapter 17.08 by adding a definition for transitional housing and amend Chapter 17.32 by adding transitional housing as a conditional use. Commissioners, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on a conflict of interest or personal bias on this topic? Nope. Okay. Staff presentation. And after the staff presentation, any person can speak for up to three minutes. If we have questions, your time responding will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, put your name and mailing address on the sign-in sheet at the table at the entrance and speak directly in the microphone by stating your name only. If you have any written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to James. Staff, please present your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Anne Marie Skinner with the Planning and Community Development Department. This will be a fairly short staff report as it is a fairly short request. This is case file ZOA 2019-13 for Transitional Housing. This is a zoning code amendment that has been initiated with the request from City Council. And City Council asked that staff provide a definition for transitional housing and add it to the list of conditional uses in the general commercial zone. So, the Planning and Community Development Director has proceeded with the amendment as directed by City Council. The Planning Commission reviews proposed amendments to Title 17 for compliance with the comprehensive plan, state statutes, and statewide planning goals, and makes recommendations to the City Council. Presently, Chapter 17.08, which is the definition chapter for Title 17, does not contain a definition for transitional housing. The proposed amendment would add a definition for transitional housing to Chapter 17.08 as well as adding it as a conditional use in the general commercial zone. The proposed definition is: "Transitional housing means a facility that is designed to provide housing and assist with obtaining appropriate supportive services such as social or psychological therapy or vocational rehabilitation to homeless persons in the subject community to facilitate movement to independent living, wherein the facility manager or supervisor determines the length of housing term for each individual on a case-by-case basis in accordance with the terms of that facility's program." Siting of transitional housing is protected from discrimination under federal law, Fair Housing Act. No written comments were received regarding the proposed amendment. And that concludes the staff report.
So, there is a... There is an asterisk?
Yes.
In the definition, and it's related to the language "in the subject community", and it notes that that was not in the original text?
Sent to DLCD.
It wasn't in... Correct, so part of the process for a zoning ordinance amendment is that the planning department has to send a notification to the Department of Land Conservation and Development Department, and that has to be sent at least thirty-five days prior to the first public hearing. And when staff sent that definition to DLCD, it did not include "in the subject community". It doesn't matter. No, it's not a problem. And that has since been modified, or rectified, I should say, because I have sent this revised definition to DLCD.
Oh, so they've received this new definition, okay. Okay, I guess, you know, to homeless persons in the subject community...
The idea was, you don't wanna open a facility and then have everybody from a facility in, you know, Warrington brought down and placed in a facility here. You wanna have homeless people here served. Now, I don't care where they're originally from. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you're homeless and you originally were born in Lincoln City. No, you're just now living here in Lincoln City, and we're gonna serve you. Not, you know, an organization brings somebody from, you know, Wilsonville and puts them in the facility here.
So, is there a residency requirement? Or, I mean, when this says "in the subject community", could they have arrived yesterday, or?
As long as they're not being moved from another facility in a different... Somewhere else. I mean, basically, we're trying to serve the homeless that are here, not import homeless from a facility in...
Sure, I understand.
That was the only reason why I suggested that language, thus. And you may not agree, but...
No, I like it because I think we should be taking care of our own, and clearly, we have many to take care of in this community. I'm just... I just want the language to be tight enough so that...
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna say, demonstrate that you've been sleeping on the street here for X number of days. It's not like that. It's just like, you're here, and you just didn't arrive on a transport from a transitional housing facility in Wilsonville.
Right, okay. Okay, questions?
So, currently, they're not just for general commercial, but in all of Title 17, there isn't a functioning definition of transitional housing currently?
Correct.
Okay, so this is to create that definition and also add it as a conditional use? I would... I'm curious if this would be an appropriate time to look at if solely the general commercial is the only place that we would have a conditional use. Is it gonna come up in a year that someone's going to want an application or have an opportunity for a building that is in a multifamily zone, and we're gonna be coming back and doing the exact same thing, saying, well, we're gonna have to add it as a conditional use in multifamily because it's not there, but it's in general commercial? Essentially, is this coming up because of a current application that needed a definition, and we realized we didn't have it, and so we're trying to make things right and fill that hole? I think it could be a good time to say, you know, do we want this in single-family, multifamily, and add the conditional use to the zones that it's appropriate if we are creating a definition?
It certainly would be appropriate and prudent and part of the Planning Commission's role to investigate and deliberate that very question, and if Planning Commission determines that it should be in additional zones as a conditional use, to so recommend to City Council.
And we might not be able to accomplish it by tweaking this language because we gave notice to people impacted by this, but we would give additional notice. I think the real... One of the reasons...
This was noticed citywide.
What, this was, but it wasn't noticed to go into RM
Right, all of the different...
Any other zones.
Right.
What we could do would be, as part of our... Could we, as part of our... If we recommend this to the City Council, invite them to explore that possibility.
Yes, and as Anne Marie said, it's entirely appropriate for you to recommend that. I do think that a lot of the reason for this is we don't wanna jump through the hurdles of doing a director's interpretation, and then noticing, and then doing that if this comes up again. So, rather than hold all... You know, the city's kinda had a history of, gee, we really ought to amend the code. Let's write that down here, and we'll keep a list. And then, you know, fifteen years later goes, hey, don't we have a list of code amendments we should make? We've kinda just decided to just go ahead and make them, just to try to make the code better.
Right. Okay, so I like the idea of having City Council explore that potential for it to be in other areas. I'm okay with it in general commercial now for this particular ordinance. Any other questions for staff, discussion? Okay. Does any member of the audience, either of you, wish to provide any comments? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I so moved to close the ZOA 2019-13 Transitional Housing meeting.
Public hearing and the record.
Public hearing, thank you.
And the record too?
And record.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the public hearing and the record is closed. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move that we recommend this zoning change to the City Council and request that they consider putting it... Applying it to other zones in addition to general commercial.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sending it to City Council. Just knocking them off. Okay. Oh, we do... Uh-oh.
I thought you were gonna get away.
Nah, I knew that wasn't gonna happen. Oh, boy. Okay.
Oh, I see, okay. Sitting here with him.
Can you walk us through this?
Note of page twelve would be easier. Now, I actually printed this with blue highlighting to show the conditions, but obviously, the printer doesn't have enough.
Okay.
So, I'm just gonna step through this. I said page twelve. Page twelve is where the existing conditions are in the staff report, but I tweaked them. So, I'm just gonna step through them, and I think probably the best way to handle this is, if... I'll just ask you, just, everybody agree? And if you don't agree, then somebody say, take that out or take this out, and you can call for a vote on that. So, the first condition is, prior to occupancy for the emergency shelter, install a six-foot-tall solid wood fence along the north property line, and then the reference to the map, and the north and east property lines, and then the reference to the map, to provide a buffer between the apartment building to the north and the golf course to the east. Does anyone have it? That's essentially what was required in the staff report.
I liked Steve's suggestion that we could set a date on it. I think it's reasonable. It takes a little bit of time to build a fence, and, you know, whether it's, you know, two weeks, or January 1st, or something along those lines.
So, you would prefer... Rather than prior to occupancy, you would say?
By this date.
In thirty days.
I like that suggestion.
Within X days, you got a suggestion?
Thirty days.
Steve says thirty.
Thirty days sounds...
We got two weeks.
You can normally...
Yeah, I don't know about how long it takes to get fenced though.
But it's rough to find contractors these days.
Well, there was a fellow at the meeting that said he would do it.
Well, he said he would pay for it.
He said he was ready to put it up.
No, he said his... It was David Elton. He said he would, if they had to build it, he would pay for it. His family has trust or something, so.
I say thirty days.
I think thirty days is reasonable. I think two weeks is too short at this time.
But try to do it as quickly as possible.
Okay, so within thirty days, install a six-foot-tall solid wood fence. Staff okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, second condition, prior to occupancy for the emergency shelter, create an outdoor gathering area adjacent to the building on the subject site. The gathering area shall include a video surveillance camera and shall be large enough to accommodate one picnic table, trash receptacle, recyclables receptacle, receptacle. I'm just gonna take out the smoking station. And weather protection, at least five feet wide by eight feet long by eight feet high. The gathering area shall contain downward-facing shielded exterior light fixtures mounted to the building, placed and designed such that at least a four-foot... At least four-foot candles of illumination within the gathering area, and zero-foot candles of illumination at subject site property lines. No portion of the gathering area shall be within twenty feet of the west property line on the subject site. So, my recommendation would be to just strike the a smoking station provision and go with it as I read.
The weather protection, at least five feet wide by eight feet long by eight feet high, is that... Are you...
That kinda sounds like a canopy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
Again, I'd put thirty days on this one instead of saying, prior to the occupancy.
Staff have an opinion on that?
I think thirty days is very reasonable.
Within thirty days, then? Two weeks? Two weeks for Miles?
I'd like to see the doorway in the back that is tied to the inside be within the fenced area, which I think would be a good thing for when the shelter is open. Folks can go outside there, they're monitored, and they can have a cigarette or just get some fresh air.
Is that in addition to this condition?
I think there is a door there, and I think that should be included wrapped around the corner so that that area can be accessed from the building, so that they're not going out and going on the street.
It does say that this is to be adjacent to the building, so I think they could place the gathering area in... Adjacent to the building, kind of in the area where you're talking about, as long as it's not within twenty feet of the west property line. So, I don't know that it's inconsistent.
And there wouldn't be any way for it to be included in the fencing, because the fencing is on the property line?
I think they should bring the fence out and incorporate at least some of the side of the yard so that people staying at night can go down and out that side door to the building and be secure.
Their policies don't allow that.
They're not allowed to go out of the building at night.
Once they're in, that's it.
They're in, they're in through the night, so there isn't any like, gee, it's midnight, and I wanna smoke. I'm gonna head out the door.
And the site, it shares parking with two other lots, so putting fencing through the tax lot won't work.
So...
Because you'll cut off parking.
Moving on then, two is okay with thirty days, and removing smoking station. Number three, relocate existing picnic table on the site to the gathering area.
I think that's already happened.
It's already been relocated.
Okay, so do you wanna strike that? That's just gonna mess up my numbering, though. I'll just strike it since it's already happened. I'll just leave it in here and strike three. I'll have to renumber the conditions, but I'm just gonna keep talking with the numbers that are here.
Keep talking.
Number four, install video surveillance cameras on the exterior of the building with live feeds to the designated area inside the building with one individual monitoring the surveillance cameras. Whenever the emergency shelter is in operation, there shall be at least one camera on every exterior wall of the building. This is in addition... This is in addition to the ones specifically locating at the gathering area. And I believe that... I didn't write this, but I...
Police.
I thought the police wanted it...
Maintain the video for thirty days.
Yeah, so video shall be retained... Maintained for thirty days.
And I think the video surveillance cameras, I think they've already been installed, right? Yeah, they have been. But we probably should just keep that there anyway, because we're adding the thirty-day option.
Okay, video records shall be maintained and available to the police for thirty days. That should cover it. Number five, employ a security guard who is present on the site. And I changed this to say from... Actually, from five... And I changed this to say from, actually, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM, whenever the emergency shelter is open. Now, the language that's originally in the staff report is 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM. However, the chair had recommended an hour before and two hours after, which is why I put some additional option language in there. My recommendation is because the concern for people waiting for the shelter to open and urinating and defecating and whatever else they do between 5:00 and 6:00. Because of that concern, having security from 5:00 to 6:00 seemed important. I don't know that it's as important between 8:00 and 10:00, because most people are leaving the area. So I would recommend that you go 5:00 to 8:00 whenever the emergency shelter is open.
Yeah.
Five AM to 6:00 PM, that's.
Yeah, 5:00 PM. 5:00 PM to.
Should read 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
Eight AM.
And then, I mean, it may be obvious, but I don't just want the security guard to be present, I want him to be awake.
On duty.
So awake continuously on the site.
How about I just write on duty?
I would think that'd be expected, being a paid employee, that they would be awake.
Well, again, on duty, I mean, firemen are on duty and sleeping at night until a call comes in.
That'd seem pretty straightforward.
I'm.
Anybody else wanna say awake?
What about having them be patrolling?
You don't want them awake?
They're open, they're awake.
I don't, I think it's a little unnecessary for us to specify the.
So a security guard is present and sleeping in the bunk. Is that okay?
No. Not okay.
I think patrolling is a good word to use.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it implies alert and awake and.
Present and patrol.
Not just standing in one place.
Patrolling.
On patrol.
I like that one.
Present and on patrol on the site from 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM, whenever the emergency shelter is open. Does that work?
Yep.
Yes.
Number six, in addition to trash receptacle and recyclables receptacle in the gathering area, place an additional trash receptacle, recyclables receptacle at the front west side of the building. Seems a little overkill, but is everybody okay with that? Lot of garbage receptacles.
Yeah. Can I add a suggestion to the chance, folks? Perhaps, and this would not be a condition, but maybe provide a bucket or something, or bin, where neighbors in the community could deposit bottles that have deposits on them.
Yeah.
And they, that would, you know, discourage dumpster diving a lot.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Mr. Appicello?
Yeah.
As I'm sitting here listening to all of this, I've been pondering how to bring up this question, so I'm just going to throw it out there. During the break, I had a discussion with the applicant, and it appears that perhaps there was some lack of clarity in the application as to whether this was going to be their permanent location or whether this was going to just operate for December 1st through February 28th of 2020 and operate no longer after that. So what that leads me to is if there is a way that, if the planning commission so chooses to phrase the conditions such that if this was only operating from now until February 28th and would not operate as an emergency shelter thereafter, would that change the requirement for a fence?
No.
Okay, condition seven, which is on the next page, page thirteen. Chance shall remain open or at least leave the restroom facilities open between 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM on the nights when the shelter will be open. That was essentially a police department recommendation, and again, has to do with urination, defecation, while people waiting around for the facility to open.
That's fine.
I modified number eight, which was very closely related, but originally said, they must have a restroom at all times. Well, they're not gonna substitute for our parks department and be operating a public restroom 24 hours. So what I did with number eight was say, Chance restroom facilities or a porta potty shall be available at all times for patrons waiting to use the shelter between 5:00 to 6:00 or turned away from the shelter when the shelter is open. So the other issue is, you go there, you have to go to the bathroom, they turn you away for whatever reason. Now your alternative is to, I guess, hike to the casino or you, we're trying to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood, urination and defecation, so they maybe should let you use the bathroom or send you to the porta potty. So that's what I think the police were getting at. I don't think they really intended for them to substitute for the parks department and operate a public restroom 24 hours a day. So I don't know, you could strike one of these conditions if you think they're redundant. I would probably keep both of them, but, because I think you can, you don't have to do a porta potty if you just say, okay, we're turning you away, but if you need to use the restroom, you got five minutes, so.
I think number seven states between 5:00 and 6:00 that the restroom facilities should be available, so I think it's a little redundant.
Yeah, it is, but the second one also addresses the people turned away.
Addresses people that come after 6:00. Yeah, so we could combine them. Yeah.
I'd keep them both. I mean, it's a little over.
I, yeah, I realize, but we're already up to fifteen pages, so I.
Yeah, yeah.
So seven and eight, okay, as they are?
Yeah, yeah.
Number nine, when Chance turns away clients, Chance shall provide the rejected shelter client alternative locations and resources and provide transportation to appropriate facilities, rather than just turn them back in the surrounding neighborhood. This, I realize, imposes a burden that you may not want to impose. I think it could be satisfied by calling a cab and saying, take them to, you know, the bus stop, but at 2:00 in the morning, if you're turned away, there is no bus. So it's up to you if you wanna delete this.
Could we change that to read, when Chance turns clients away, Chance will call the police and notify them that they have done that and then asks the police perhaps to escort the individuals off the site? Because I don't, I mean, I see the problem here, but on the other hand, I don't see that as Chance's responsibility.
I, but I don't see it as the police department's responsibility to provide transportation services.
Well, I think they're not gonna be turning somebody away unless that person is disruptive or causing a problem. And so if.
Or they're full.
No, when they're full, he has backup plans. He described that two weeks ago, yeah.
It does say in here about the alternative locations, if they give them opportunities of saying, we can't take care of you, but you can go, here are some ideas of where you can go.
Yeah, and their application did state that they do that and that they also will provide transportation when they can't for people, like, so they said they have the voucher program, and then also, I think it was, it was either Sunday through Thursday or Thursday through Sunday, they can provide overflow transportation to Newport.
We could soften this a bit by saying, and if available, provide transportation to appropriate facilities.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, with that change, then, if available, that gives them a little option if they don't have someone that can transport or means to do it, they're not required to. Chance shall provide daily educational briefings to their shelter clients about the importance of obeying the laws and being good neighbors so that Chance's resources can remain available and reduce the concerns of other citizens in the area, e.g., education on criminal trespass, dumpster diving, transfer materials in the right-of-way, urination, defecation in public, dog waste, prohibited camping, criminal mischief. That was just me adding a list of things that I told the police they should be telling people, please don't do these things. If that's okay, number eleven, Chance shall conduct regular community outreach meetings with neighbors and actually involve the LCPD in some of their planning and community meetings. So that's from the PD recommending conditions.
Yes, that needs improvement.
Chance shall strictly comply with the Oregon Fire Code Technical Advisory Memo, number fourteen dash twelve, incorporated herein by this reference. Compliance shall be evidenced by a combined building department, fire department inspection before any occupancy of the shelter is permitted. Clear enough?
Mr. Appicello?
Yeah.
I have one question about the condition, two conditions back, about the daily briefings.
Yeah.
How will that be enforced?
I actually took out the language that police indicated that they would report their compliance. I mean, I think any condition of approval that's not complied with can result in the revocation of the conditional use approval. So if we hear that it's not occurring, then the planning commission can, after notice and public hearing, revoke the conditional use approval. In addition, citation under chapter 116 of our code can occur, and that's a thousand dollars a day offense, so.
But the only way that we know that it's occurring or not occurring is their word versus someone else's word. So my question is, where is our proof for revoking a conditional use permit, just based on someone's word?
Well, I mean, we would have testimony from, obviously, we could have a proceeding where we subpoena people and have them come in and testify as to whether or not the briefing occurred. Again, it may not raise to the level of, I think it's just a good idea to do it. We can add the condition back that they report to the police that they're getting it done, but they could, you know, that's, reporting requirements generally, they're a way to do enforcement without having to send somebody there. Or you could go undercover and attend.
I just wanna be on record that I don't agree with that condition, because I don't think it's enforceable, so.
Let's see. Thirteen, additional area to be occupied by outdoor gathering, yeah, additional area to be occupied by outdoor gathering areas or areas occupied by professional staff, including parking during shelter operations, must be identified. So tell us what additional areas you are using square footage-wise, not just the nine-hundred-some-odd square feet for sleeping. Conditions of approval shall limit such professional staff based on available parking or a corresponding reduction in volunteers. So if you're gonna have three professional staff there that night, maybe you can't have all 12 volunteers. You gotta have nine. The adequacy of parking shall be documented and compliance verified or non-compliance noted in a report at the end of the first cycle in 22820. And then additional parking through a shared parking agreement or other arrangement must be provided if existing parking proves inadequate. So this is my attempt to address the disparity between saying, we're not gonna have professional staff there, the volunteers will be there parking in the spaces where the professional staff would normally be. But then, in answer to a lot of the objections, they say, oh, we have professional staff and they have this training and they're available, and, well, but if they're there in the parking spaces, then that's less parking for the volunteers, less parking for the homeless that have vehicles. So, and rather than just say your parking is limited or you have to provide additional parking, it said, report on how this goes at the end of the period and tell us whether or not you needed additional parking, and then planning commission can revisit it. That was the attempt to compromise. Fourteen, all proposals and promises of the applicant in the application and during the hearing, including specifically the mitigation plan, not rejected and not inconsistent with this order, are enforceable conditions of approval. That's just kind of standard language you should have in all our land use approvals. Shower facilities, oh, I did do a search of their materials that we have in the packet, and shower did occur twice in their documentation. It talked about how showers are available nine, between their regular hours of the recovery operation. I don't know if there are showers in this facility, but because I don't wanna get into it, I just said, shower facilities in the facility, if any, shall be made available to shelter patrons. So if they have them, make them available. And then the last one, Chance shall pay for cleanup of illegal camping damage demonstrated to be caused by patrons who are turned away from the shelter and who illegally camp on public or private property in the facility. So this was something that the chair had recommended, but I thought what the chair had recommended was a little bit.
Vague.
Yeah, so I.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how would we know who exactly is using those? And these are all over town. I mean, right behind the auto parts store, there was someone even in that area.
And it's very expensive to clean up. So this is very specific. It must be, this damage has to be demonstrated to be caused by someone who was turned away. It's not just a, oh, by the way, you gotta pay for all cleanups of all camps in the city. No, this is, a specific person was there, was turned away, we know who that person is, and then we find that person in the neighborhood camping, causing damage, that's gotta be cleaned up. That's.
So hypothetically, what were they turned away for and why is Chance held liable for that? For what they do after they're turned away? I mean, I turn people away from my business all the time that are belligerently drunk, that have been served by other businesses, and if I serve them a drink, then I'm liable, but at the same time, this just seems kind of, like, how would we know?
I did my best to take the chair's suggestion and put it into more enforceable language. I wouldn't recommend this condition. But I made an attempt to put it into language that I think you could make enforceable, so it's up to you.
I just don't think, I think it would be hard to enforce that. How do you know?
Right, yeah.
I understand the concern, and yeah, it costs us a lot of money to do cleanups, but.
Well, but also, you know, we don't have a 24/7 homeless shelter in Lincoln City, and, you know, even if, you know, whether they turn someone away or not, if the weather isn't below 40 degrees, they're gonna have to turn everyone away. And these people, where else are they supposed to go? And that's not Chance's fault, so I can't see holding them liable for people camping when we have no homeless shelter.
So is there consensus to, or at least a majority, to remove this condition or not?
I would.
I would too.
I would do.
So that's three, anybody else?
I just don't think it's enforceable.
Okay, so sixteen goes away? So that would be it.
I have a question. Does the, does the conditional use permit stay with the property?
Yes, the conditional use by code runs with the land. It also has a condition that the use has to be established and within one year, or it goes away. So that might be more applicable to the previous applications, since you didn't give it a longer time period. They have one year to do what they need to do, otherwise their conditional use goes away. Not as important here, because you've set some conditions and very minor improvements here as opposed to what needs to happen under the codes there.
The reason I'm asking is what you brought up, that Chair is intending to find a different location, so it's possible that they would operate this warming shelter for only this season. What I think you were getting at is, does it make sense to impose all of these construction activities if they're only gonna be there until the end of February?
You're.
Was that sort of what you were getting at?
Correct, but what Mr. Appicello is saying is that the conditional use permit runs with the land, so if Chance leaves, someone else could come in and operate under these same conditions.
And I, I actually, you know, when I read, I did not see any reference in the record to, oh, by the way, this will only be for this year. I saw it as an annual request, and changing the application now seems like the wrong time.
I thought I heard something in the testimony about Chance having funding to do a feasibility study to locate at a more appropriate place after this season.
And that's, even if that fact was in the record, that doesn't mean that this request was only for one year.
Right, right.
And that's.
Why I ask?
Because we actually had, I mean, this is law, but, you know, our code doesn't include temporary use except for, you know, when there's an emergency declared. If you look at our code, we went through a lot of rambling to, wrangling to get some provisions in our code for temporary emergency shelters and things like that, and this wasn't, that's not what this application was.
But if the property changes hands, the new owner would have to implement an emergency shelter within a year or they lose the conditional use permit.
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah, I, and if the applicant wanted to appeal the decision to the city council and modify the application for, in a de novo hearing before the city council, then the council could consider whether or not these conditions are appropriate for a, you know, short term.
Okay.
But I, I don't think it's appropriate to change the application after the close of the record, after the.
Right, right. Okay.
So I, I made the changes. I can print you a clean copy of this if you wanna sign it in a, tomorrow or the day or two.
Okay, I'll come in.
Unless you wanna sign one with blueprint on it.
Yeah, I'll come in, sign a clean one.
And we'll, of course, the, if this, I need a motion to accept this final order and authorize the chair to sign.
Move, we accept the final order?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for doing that on the fly. That was pretty impressive. Any old business?
We have no, no old business.
Any new business?
No new business.
Oh, good. Planning commission training?
We have no planning commission training this evening.
Reports and comments?
I have none.
Future agenda items and next meeting, I, we will get this back? No, we will get the transitional housing back at our next meeting.
Yes.
Anything else at the next meeting?
Yes, the, so the final order for the transitional housing CUP will be at the next meeting. And then also on the schedule are the, several code, code amendments. And so those will be public hearings, recommendations to city council. They are fairly minor.
Bluff setback.
There's a bluff setback, which is adding a few sentences.
Right.
And that's at the request of city council. There's an accessory dwelling unit cleanup, which, and I'm calling it cleanup because there's some inconsistencies throughout Title seventeen with accessory dwelling units. So it's just making it consistent. There, the big ones are the mobile food unit ordinance and the creation of the resort community commercial zone, which is the zone, well, it's the creation of the zone, not the implementation. And then there will be a zone change request, comprehensive plan map amendment from John Sutton to change his property from multiple family residential to general commercial. And that will be all on December seventeenth.
All on the seventeenth? Wow, thank you so much.
The good news is that on January seventh, thus far, there is nothing scheduled. And so I'm hoping to kind of do that as a wrap-up review of 2019 and then discuss goals, objectives for planning commission for 2020.
Okay.
So you will be doing a dog and pony show on 2019? Dancing girls, the whole nine.
Well, I don't know if there'll be any dogs and ponies, but.
The mobile food, the mobile food unit issue has been noticed for a city council meeting, is that correct?
It has been noticed for, yes, it has been noticed for planning commission and city council. It goes to city council, I believe, February tenth.
Okay.
If I recall correctly.
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you commissioners for hanging in there. Thank you, Richard, we're done.
James, can I give this to you?
Yes.
Best water, unfortunately.
What? We have to turn what?
To get updated or something.
Oh, our computers? Oh. Shoot. I'm gonna bring mine in tomorrow, because I've got too much stuff in the bag.